Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Franklin Board of Education meeting for December 11th, 2024. The meeting has been properly posted. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Sapursky?
Here.
Dr. Khan?
Yeah.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
Mrs. Yank?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Dr. Beer?
Here.
Great, we're all here, and we, for the Pledge of Allegiance, I've asked Lexi and Avery from Pleasant View to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Witkowski, seconded by Dr. Khan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Pleasant View Elementary Presentation. Ashley, please.
Thank you.
I even had it written down on my agenda.
Leading of the Honorable Spirits.
Okay, we would like to welcome Pleasant View, home of the Panthers. As you know, it is a school four K to five with about 400 students. 10% are students with disabilities, about 25% are economically disadvantaged, and 10% are English language learners. They have an amazing and dedicated staff of 35 teachers and 30 support staff. This learning community is led by Principal Ashley Imperial. This is her third year in the district and ninth year as a principal. Their mission is to create a unified effort between the school, home, and community to provide a positive, safe, and engaging environment. They are a school that exceeds expectations on the state report card. Let's hear about how they make that happen.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Witkowski, for that nice introduction. I'm here tonight with Carly Gordy, to my left, our instructional coach, and two fifth grade students who are also members of our Panther Pride team, kind of think of like a student council. I'll let them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Avery.
Hi, my name is Loxie.
And tonight, we're going to talk about, you know, in our coherence plan and our school improvement plans, we have three, we have three buckets that we often talk about, and we're here to talk about engagement. And in the schools, we have three teams that really work on engagement that target our three stakeholders: our staff, our students, and our families. And Pleasant View this year has been really, after a year or so of these teams, we found that if we didn't have some sort of common theme, it gets really easy for those three teams to work in isolation. So really making sure that we are focusing on a collective theme that each stakeholder group, so families, students, and staff, were focusing on through their lens. And we're really grounding everything in this whole concept of collective efficacy where we have to have a shared belief that the work that we do together has a positive impact on the student experience as well as the staff and family experience. So today, we're going to share those themes with you, and then each individual up here will kind of share a different lens in what that looks like. So to kind of kick off our, our whole theme, we're grounding everything in strengths and storytelling. So where that comes from is each engagement group looks at that engagement survey data from students, families, and staff. And we picked kind of the lowest scoring questions from each category. So for family, it was around just receiving feedback about their students' experience at school. For staff, it was around effective team collaboration. And for students, it was around caring about each other's feelings. And so we kind of dug into that through talking to those different groups and came up with the theme around strengths and storytelling. And our goal this year was to find ways that we are leaning into the strengths of all three of those stakeholders, but then telling that story, because sometimes we get really data-rich and information-poor in terms of like, who is the person behind that data. And so through that, we really focused our first two months of the year with our staff around taking the Gallup Strength Finders, which you may be familiar with, and really having everybody do some self-work and really being able to identify what their top strengths were, what that means, and in their grade-level teams, being able to really identify like, how does that impact their work amongst their, their colleagues? Then we kind of rolled that out into a bigger whole, like, how does that fit in our, in our school, which is very interesting when you see that kindergarten teachers tend to be the harmonious group and very, right? And as you get older, the, the older staff tend to be more of relators. But as we did that work, our other big piece was then making sure that our whole building, everything we do in each team was following these two guiding questions. Does this contribute to kids making one year's growth in one year's time? And how are we creating common opportunities and experiences for kids across grade levels in our building? And really setting up our culture in a way that that's where we're grounding our decisions in.
So as we shared, we were really leaning into our staff's strengths, and specifically, we wanted to lean into the, our amazing teachers and the things that they were doing in their classrooms. So this year, we got the opportunity to go to our specialist teachers first and give them the opportunity for instructional rounding. They got the opportunity to go and visit their counterparts in music, gym, and art. We gave them the opportunity, they subbed, we subbed, we made the opportunities happen, and they got to visit each other and fill out this positive vibes. It really was to give them some clear thoughts and be able to capture their thinking, so you could see some really great things that they added. All three staff members came back raving about it. We didn't even ask for these back, and they went out of their way to share them with us because they had such a great experience. We then got to build on this experience where they got to really see the power of their teaching and their counterparts by yesterday introducing it to our entire staff. And we will be giving everyone the opportunity now for instructional rounding throughout the rest of the school year. And then we, as our engagement team, for our staff engagement team, we're really leaning into the storytelling and sharing our Panther powers as well. So our staff really wanted to make sure that parents knew who the staff are in our building, and we wanted to celebrate them. So these are our first three PV superstaff that you can find in our bulletin that comes out on Mondays. You can see that we really wanted to highlight the team members and their favorite thing at PV at the moment. The team was very aware of making sure that every single staff member will get recognized, because every person is an integral part to Pleasant View, and we really wanted to share that PV superpower or that PV favorite thing at the moment, because all of those superpowers go together to help us be a great staff. And also, we wanted to connect to that theme of storytelling and communication specifically with our families.
We always start the year revisiting how to be respectful, responsible, and ready to learn. A big piece of that is regularly celebrating students and their successes and their strengths. Some way we do this at Pleasant View are we have some various students share a way to greet another in their language. This year, we've had American Sign Language for our students that are nonverbal, German, because we have a teacher that speaks German, and a fifth grader share the Arabic greeting. Every Wednesday, students that are nominated by staff for something that deserves kudos, whether it's showing integrity, being kind, great effort to the classroom, et cetera, are celebrated in the morning announcements and get a positive phone call home by the principal. At our monthly assembly, we celebrate a Panthers of the Month, and at each grade level that are nominated by staff for showing Panther pride, acting with integrity, and positively contributing to PV. We also celebrate classes that are working together and showing Panther pride in specials: music, art, and FIAED. That, that are awarded with the Golden Awards for showing constant Panther pride in the building. The Golden Awards are the Golden Seeker for FIAED, a Golden Paintbrush for Art, and a Golden Kazoo for Music. Another big part of our students' engagement is having a building-wide theme that introduced at each assembly, and then worked on throughout the month through various goals and activities throughout our building. These are a list of some of that, that have already happened and some that are coming up next in the school year. Panther pride, kindness, generosity, and the power of words, caring about others' feelings, productive struggle, reading via All School Read. To give you an example of what this looks like, in November, we worked on a generosity and, and the power of our words. Our Franklin Police Department Officer Coyer did a read aloud to our school called "The Word Collector", which talks about the power of words, and the Panther Pride team members gave a lesson on how many words there are in English language with a demonstration on the power of words. With a toothpaste activity that showed, once you say a word, squeeze up the toothpaste out, it's hard to put them back. We also had a food drive for our community partner, and in addition to collecting items, we made cards of affirmation to use our words to lift others up.
A buddy classroom, a buddy class. A buddy classroom is a classroom from different grade levels that's mapped routine to create bonds between older students and younger students. Can I get some water quick? A buddy classroom is a classroom from different grade levels that's mapped routinely to create bonds between older students and younger students. The older students can become role models for the younger students and can lead and guide through various themes. Some examples we read is a book, Alma and the Worry Stone together, and made up our own worry stones. Mix it up lunch days where we get to eat lunch with our buddy classrooms. Celebrations such as all-school bingo at Brown Reading School. A school go assisting buddies with particular lessons, example of a third grader working with a kindergarten student on a number, and a scat lover scamager hunt. Lastly, each month, we celebrate and share the learning, which is done via five to seven-minute video that's highlighting our work. This is part of trying to engage our families in understanding what we are doing at Pleasant View as our school committee. We share these in our classrooms and assemblies, in our videos, newsletters on school Facebook page. We've learned that videos and pictures are only one way to help with your families to see what we are doing. We like to share those videos with you tonight that highlighted on our work, October work on kindness.
So as Lexi said, we try, like, a big piece of our storytelling is, as we did some of those more focused conversations with families, oftentimes, we found when they would say that, "I want to know more about what my student is doing," it really comes down to they want like snapshots into what their child's daily experience is. It isn't that they don't know what they're learning or how they're doing with their learning, but I think it's pictures, videos, kind of really trying to, what we say, like storytelling, what goes on within the building in the day. And so we've been trying to now just take those collective messages and then have a way to highlight it every month, whatever we've been a building theme. And we've also just recognized that through video and picture, it's really helped us get over some of the language barriers that we do have with many of our families in that they're some of our most interactive commenters, because they can change the language within the social media or on YouTube, right? A picture just transcends all things, so that's been fun to see. So we have one every month, but we just thought we'd share one from, I think this was the one from our month when we did kindness.
What's up Pleasant View Panthers?
My name is Mike, and I'm here with some other fifth graders, and we've been focusing on kindness a lot this month.
This month, some ways we've shown kindness, we had a read aloud, and we made a quilt.
Hello, my name is Colton, and let's go take a walk and see what other Pleasant View Panthers think. Here are some second graders that are showing us some acts of kindness.
My name's Mitchell.
My name's Henry.
We include people in our games.
Giving someone a hug.
My name is Simra, and I cleaned up the playground when there was garbage on it.
I've been holding open the door for people. What have you been doing, Bria?
I've been doing the same thing.
Helped a kindergartner find their classroom.
So I'm here with another fifth grader named Julia, and tell us what you did for kindness this month.
Um, this month, I stacked my friend's chair for them at the end of the day.
One kind thing I've done, um, I've cleaned up my class.
Hi, we're working on kindness this month, and one thing that I've done this month that was kind is I returned a sweatshirt to one of my friends that forgot it at recess.
When Ellie wanted a smile, I gave Ellie a smile.
What I did was kind is I took out the, my neighbor's garbage cans for them on garbage day.
Hi, I'm back with another fifth grader.
Hi, I'm Jack.
Jack, what's something nice that you've done this month?
I helped my parents with the groceries and bring them in the house.
So hopefully, that video kind of gives you a sense of, it's okay, how we have a theme. We've presented to our, our whole staff, worked through it in the engagement team. It gets presented to the students oftentimes through, there are just two of, many of those kids on the mini microphone are representatives, are fifth graders on student council. They lead something through an assembly. Our teachers follow it up with activities in the classroom and then with the buddy classrooms. And it's just very powerful to see how that culture then gets ingrained in terms of the older students leading the younger students. We have it set up so their buddy classrooms are at recess and lunch together. And I think the coolest power in all of it is like when we do break out the mini microphone to talk, I mean, like, there's like, it's like a celebrity walked into the building. Everybody is around that person wanting to share what they've done that month related to it, and I think that speaks volumes to just the, the alignment of the work and the excitement around it. So thank you for letting us share with you tonight.
I think we have maybe some pictures.
Picture opportunity.
Linda, I think it's important for you to get in this one.
Yeah, you should get a picture.
Good job, PV.
All right, Friends of Franklin, Anodyne Coffee, Mason DeWitt, and Grace Barr from Diverse Grounds. Dr. Moe, please.
So we have some very special guests here tonight in the audience, and I'll call them up in a minute, but I wanted to say a couple of words first. So in case you don't know, we have a coffee shop here at the ECC. And I've been doing this for a long time, and we wanted to recognize Mason first from Anodyne Coffee. He is our partner in doing that coffee shop. And I can tell you, I was part of going over there with the group the very first time to meet him. I got to sample, learned more about coffee than I've ever learned in my whole life. But from the very moment that we started talking with Mason, he has been the absolute model example for what you would want to show a group of kids about what partnership is and what it means. That doesn't happen everywhere. I'm sure the adults in the room know that. It's important for our new, young adults in the room to realize that partnerships like that do happen, and people are caring and work together. Nothing but welcoming, easy to work with. We very quickly got the ECC equipped with the right water line to have good coffee here and set it all up, and it's exactly how things should go, and that doesn't always happen. So I cannot say enough about Mason and Anodyne and all the extra pieces that have come about. I'll let them talk a little bit. And then we have Grace and Dana. They are our teachers for the 18 to 21 program who have made it happen from the very beginning, have thought this is going to be a great idea. We have them here on Tuesdays when we always have groups here. They are so popular that they've been asked to come out to schools and do special events at schools and do coffee, and that happened very quickly. Then we also have James and Colin here. They work in our coffee shop. And speaking from someone who comes to the coffee shop every single Tuesday, the difference in how much independence and confidence and willingness to serve customers is, is noticeable. So they might not feel that day-to-day, but when you do the work for a while, you notice from the first day to just yesterday, we had coffee with our principal group. So if I had to sum up how we want partnerships to go and how we want Friends of Franklin to be and act and grow and learn, this would 100% be the definition of how you want it to go. So I cannot thank them enough. They all get to come up.
Do we have teams?
That's yours.
Yeah. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
You guys can sit if you want. I know it has questions.
Did you guys want to say anything? Colin, I know you've spoken.
All right. Hi, everybody. My name is Colin Marker, and I'm a student in the transition program, and I enjoy it a lot. So every Tuesday, when we are at Diverse Grounds, we sell coffee, iced coffee, hot chocolates, and other drinks. But we also sell white cane keychains and disability pride cane keychains. The white cane keychain is important because that shows support for people with a white cane, this are for people who are either blind or visually impaired. And the disability pride cane keychain means it's to show honors for people with disabilities, and that's an important thing. Also, the reason why we're called Diverse Grounds, because that shows that we're inclusive to the coffee shop and to people with disabilities, and that we're inclusive to all. Also, I, what I like about this program is that we get to cook on Wednesdays and practice being independent, working on a budget. We also go bowling on Thursdays, and on Fridays, we go to the YMCA, but that's where we practice learning about health and hygiene lessons when we have independent workouts, and we also go swimming. This is a phenomenal district, and it's a phenomenal program.
Thanks, Colin.
Um, yes. One more thing I'd like to mention is that a couple weeks ago, we went to Ben Franklin, and we sold coffee there for an hour, and then after that, I, we gave a presentation to the Ben Franklin kids about, about what we do at the program, and we also talked about inclusion and why it's important to include everyone, no matter who you are, what you look like.
Sure, yeah, I'll talk. Hey there. Oh, wow. Yeah, so cool thing about coffee is it brings people together. I always tell people, it's, it's your time of the day to just hang out, relax, enjoy it. But it also is community, and that's the cool thing about it. I've been with Anodyne only since June, so about six months now. And being with a coffee company, yeah, you, you sell coffee for a living. But there's more than that for me personally. Having the opportunity to use the platform of a locally roasted coffee company to do things like this is important to me. You know, I grew up, my best friend had muscular dystrophy, and I saw how he was treated and, and the people that he was around. And I don't know, I, it's just, there's a lot of stuff when it comes to people taking care of each other and wanting to build community, and I find that really important. So being able to do this is great. You know, I was in RAN College, hall director after that, grad hall director. It was exciting. I always worked with students. I have a master's in education. It was what I wanted to do was actually work with students. So being able to do something like this, even through coffee, and being able to, to provide this to the program, is really important to me personally, and I, and I love that about it. You know, it's like, I have an extra brewer at, at Anodyne. Where can I put it? You know, it could be one spot where it's a cafe or whatever, or we can take it and, and build what this is. And that's super important. Free installation, discounts on coffee, anything we can do to help support this program is, is important to us and me personally. So it's cool to be here. It's exciting. And yeah, come on by, come have some coffee. It's fun.
Team is about, I, um, coffee shop, I, um, exactly, I, cafe, I, I, me, I make, uh, I, I had cafe, I, and, um, both, I, I really appreciate cafe, and, um, exactly, damn, I get, I really, um, cafe, I, a smores cafe, and, um, it was smores cafe, or S.T., yeah. And, um, I'm a clearly a gram, I, like, cafe, yeah.
Sounds good.
So we had two, um, specials this week, trying to kind of mix it up, and we had our principal meetings this week, so it was fun to try out. We have a cold brew, and we did a cold foam over our cold brew, and then we had some smores flavoring for our smores coffee, which both, our cold brew sold out for the first time ever. So that was pretty fun to see. And it's really just awesome to see, just like Jessica said, the amount of growth that we are seeing within the students, sorry, I call them participants, in our Beyond 18 program. Just because this is a core value of being a citizen, right? So one of our school district's values is to be a good citizen, and we're working towards that every single day, and just really showing our participants, our community members, their parents, their family members, what people with disabilities are capable of and what they can accomplish. And I throw it back to a couple of years ago, when we kind of first started this program, so this has been like, or the coffee shop idea, this has been three years in the making, and we would go to different coffee shops. It's like a rough day at work when I have to go to a coffee shop to check it out, but we really realized that that is some, something friends do together. And you don't have to like coffee, because I'll tell you, not a lot of my kids like. And you don't have to like coffee because I'll tell you, not a lot of my kids like coffee. Um, but it's something that they can do for the rest of their life and just be citizens and have no barriers to that at all. So, um, it's just really, really nice to see how far we have grown and kind of what our next plans may be. Maybe trying out that new rec center, um, in a, in a, in a year or so. Um, and just really coming up with new ideas, new flavors and seeing what our participants can really accomplish. And also Dana is the coffee drinker. So she, um, she and Jess were the final say on our coffee. So we do sell them in bags if you'd ever like to try them. We have a sample size bag and a twelve ounce bag. So, and it comes with our label on it, thanks to Mason. Yep, and we are getting into the T-shirt game as well. So, um, just look forward to seeing you guys. Please come on Tuesday morning if you guys can. We'd love to see you and we'd love to serve you coffee and chat.
I have your phone.
Thank you so much.
Anybody who wants to join for the.
Yes, please, guys. There you go. Oh, Mason, you should be sent.
Yeah.
Right behind.
Congratulations.
We're around for coffee.
Colin, James, nice job speaking.
Good job.
You'll be able to watch your videos.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll let you know when it's up. Yeah, but you got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, Grace.
Oh, you're just, I'll teach you some new today.
Really? Twelve years.
Great job.
All right, one more picture. I'm so sorry. You know me, the pictures, we gotta do it.
Gotta have them.
Push this way a little bit. Yeah, we should, thank you. Tell them this way. Nope, you're in front again, buddy.
Okay.
Don't cover your faces, okay? And tell them to just.
She's kind of.
All right, good job, team.
I'm so awesome.
I love it. Thanks for being here, guys.
Good job, guys.
Yeah, of course.
You guys don't have to stay.
Gotta get back to my two-year-old.
All right, moving.
Oh, bless you. They need all the coffee. Yeah.
Yeah, right. That's why you got it.
Thank you. All right, moving right along, community comment. Nobody has signed up. Does anybody wish to comment? All right, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved second.
Motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Dr. Beer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Thank you. School Board Calendar, Regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, January fifteenth at the ECC at six. And Wednesday, February fifth at the ECC also at six. Also, the WASB State Convention is January twenty-second to twenty-fourth at the Baird Center in Milwaukee. Uh, District Administrator update, Mrs. Bennon, please.
All right, good evening. So thank you to, to Diverse Grounds for being here tonight. I'm glad that everybody was able to meet our crew. Uh, nine to eleven on Tuesdays, they're open in the kitchen right back here, so stop in. It's the best two-dollar cup of coffee you can get with a smile. Um, and as Dr. Mo talked about, the students have become really comfortable in greeting and talking about their service and what they're doing. So, I mean, you saw that tonight. They did a wonderful job. So tonight's update, I'm really giving a few updates on some bigger things going on in the district. Um, and then a lot of what's up next after with each of those. So we're kind of all on the same page of all the planning that's going on, um, in a variety of areas, uh, throughout the district. So one that we haven't talked about in a little while is the stoplight at the high school. If you've driven by the high school, you've likely seen pieces of the stoplight or progress happening and then progress paused. There's been pieces on back order, uh, that are out of our control. So we have had some updates, um, lately that they have the standards in. Now they're working on making the arms and poles. I don't know what all of that means other than it's good that we have progress and that the pieces that were delayed are now coming through. So it's continuing to work. We don't have a completion date. When we once thought it would be November, we're now in December. So we're hopeful, um, soon. But just glad it's progressing and know that it's, it's not forgotten about or anything along those lines. It's just, uh, the demand. A lot of it is not things that are made every day. So they kind of wait for a bulk order, create supply, demand, uh, kind of our basic business economics. Uh, the Community Education and Recreation Department building, as you've seen, if you've driven down Forest Hill, uh, they've been able to take advantage of some of the nice weather. We have to have it open. Thank you. They've been able to take advantage of the cooperating weather. So we've had some clearing of the land, um, in this space to get ready to work on the building. Soon as we hit a permafrost, which it looks like maybe tonight, we're going to start hitting that really cold weather. You'll probably see that start to stall a little more out there until late winter or spring when they can get back in action. So what's up next for the CIRC building is that we will plan a groundbreaking ceremony when the work picks back up. Um, this winter was kind of a surprise that we could get at it early and chose to wait for the groundbreaking till they're really getting into the work, uh, whenever that comes after winter. The Health Clinic, which we know is the alternate bid that was with that building, separate than the rec building, separate than our Fund eighty, um, is being built simultaneously. We know it's not funded through Fund eighty. We always try to be very explicitly clear about that for our community. We have that set to open in January of twenty twenty-six. So though that's a year away, that process starts. So Mr. Cromie and Ms. Lankor have been working on setting up the first stage of just interviews and learning more about what we want at the clinic and what those facilitators or that partner would be. Uh, that then goes out to an RFP process to, for healthcare providers to put in a request if they would like to be a partner. Then we go through another series of interviews, bring on a partner, um, and then work to find the physician or a physician's assistant that would be in there. So it's a process that'll take place over a lot of months. The goal is to have a physician in place, have a partner, then a physician in place at least three months before that projected open date. It's usually about a three-month process for that physician to do all the certifications through whichever provider we've selected for, uh, the clinic. But in the meantime, we've been working to communicate that. Obviously, that was communicated slightly last May-June as we talked through health insurance. But now more so this year in our Better Place to Work Task Force for professional staff and for support staff. Uh, Mr. Cromie and Ms. Lankor have given updates that this clinic is coming. Kind of what's the goal of a clinic? Why do you have them in schools? Where have schools seen success with it and kind of what would be the accessibility, um, and the benefit to our employees and kind of where that process is, like I just walked through. So that's the update there. Um, up next would be that we have a March Health Insurance Information Presentation at a board meeting by, um, Ms. Lankor and Mr. Cromie. And then in summer of twenty-five, July will, hopefully July will work on bringing forward a new update with where we're at with the Health Clinic as far as a provider and potentially physician or in the process of hiring the physician for it or assistant. Then Franklin Forward Updates. So since the successful referendum, um, as always, it starts with gratitude to all of you as board members to allow our community to go to the polls, um, and decide to support this project. So since November sixth, we've been meeting as a core team, which is with our different consultants, C D Smith, P R A, Cadence Consulting, um, Andy Daniels, Andy Cromie, Mike Volo and myself. These are bi-weekly meetings. So far, the cadence of those has been getting regular meetings, bi-weekly set on all of our calendars. They're usually about three hours because there's obviously a lot of different things to dice out in those. Um, and right now it's been formulating who are the teams from P R A, um, and C D Smith that'll be working in project managing through this work, uh, getting our calendars aligned and then starting to get voice from staff right away. So starting Friday, um, and into next week, P R A will be on site doing interviews with different, not interviews, like listening sessions with different staff groups to kind of get ideas of what they're thinking about for spaces that are being looked at, in particular with this referendum work, um, and also with our Teaching and Learning and Special Ed Team. Some of those staff also spent time on our PD Day visiting area schools and seeing what their facilities may have to just kind of get ideas of what, what works, what doesn't work. Um, we just have time to talk around the projects now that we know we're going to be moving forward with those. Um, the first part is we know it's a four-year piece. That's been the biggest thing to remind everybody of. It's a like, it's a marathon, not a sprint. Um, so while we're getting input from all staff now, the athletic and physical education space has to come first, right? That northern side of the property so we can then clear that part of the building to move CTE up and out and renovate that. So while we'll be asking for feedback from those groups now, a lot of that has to be there so that we're appropriately aligning budget dollars through the whole project. Um, and then coming back to that group of staff later on to continue to talk about and, and adjust those plans. But that's really important for architects on the front end because now they can get into more of the detailed drawings that they need as we move forward with the project. Um, other big aspects that have been going on in the last month is really a lot with Andy Daniels meeting with C D Smith to now adjust the scope of the projects we know we have for referendum dollars. What are ones that Andy's going to lead and bid out? And what are ones that C D Smith is going to do that work? And then also how does that adjust our long-range facility plan for the district, knowing that a chunk of that larger maintenance, um, will be coming off of that list and be taken care of through the successful referendum. So that's been a variety of meetings for them to work through, uh, that detailed piece. The timeline and scope was shared with our staff through the Franklin Find Newsletter a couple of weeks ago, um, also with board through our updates. And will be shared out in the district newsletter next Thursday and then also added to our Franklin Forward website. Franklin Forward website will continue to be the best place to get up-to-date information, um, as things adjust and to see the scope and timeline of the project. So what is next when we talk about Franklin Forward? Uh, Mike Hacker of Cadence Consulting and I will present a more detailed update to the board, um, at our January meeting and we'll do that quarterly, so January, April, July and October. Uh, some of a slide deck we'll be able to share, you know, when we get to the point where there's pictures to share, we'll share those. I don't know that there'll be a lot of pictures in January, but more probably the timeline, the scope and what the process is looking like to engage, um, in the community. Uh, also what's up next is that Andy Daniels will present the Buildings and Grounds Update and Franklin Forward Long Range Facility Planning at the May Board Meeting. So that will have the adjusted scope then of the work we looked at last year in May and the year before that, um, and how it's affected with the work that's coming up now. So just a few things that are going on in the district and kind of where we will be coming through quite a few things on board agenda, um, items throughout the months to come. So any questions? Let me know.
May I ask a question? Oh, go ahead, Mary.
So will there be simultaneous work at the high school as well as at the, the elementaries?
There will be.
Okay.
We can go through the scope of kind of what that'll look like in January. That's what they're working on right now.
Let me go ahead.
Um, what's the role of Cadence Consulting?
Cadence Consulting is like a owner's rep role right now in it. So they are overseeing the entire project. They're the ones that are double-checking any RFPs, helping to get those out, uh, looking at where we can finance things, a budget. Not budget or finances isn't the word I want. Where quotes are coming in, where we might need to get more competitive bids, uh, look at the dollar amounts being used and really make sure we're making the most of the dollars. So an owner's rep is a very common role that you have with school district, especially in larger referendums that go through. So that would be like a term that would be used with Cadence Consulting.
So they are engineers or are they architects or they?
Uh, well, by trade, he's, um, Mike Hacker, who does the majority of the work with Cadence Consulting, is a, a architect. But he also has a team that's experts in, uh, the finance aspect and projecting out the projects, documenting that and keeping basically everybody on the team accountable to making the most of the dollars.
Thank you.
Sure.
You know, I think I'm going to save my question for January.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Final question.
Please.
So then, and there'll be, it's not just, you know, what it looks like and how we're going to build it, but there's going to be some kind of financial aspect to these, this board report also? Is there going to be?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Thank you. Uh, reports, presentations and other board business. Uh, Board Clerk's Report, election notice. Mrs. Larson, please.
Thank you. Notice is hereby given that an election is to be held in the Franklin Public School District on Tuesday, April first, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five. And the following offices are to be elected to succeed the present incumbents listed below. The term of the office for school board members is three years, beginning on Monday, April twenty-first, twenty twenty-five. Office School Board Member Incumbent, Mr. Mike Sprague. Office School Board Member Incumbent, Mrs. Deborah Larson. Notice is further given that a campaign registration statement and a declaration of candidacy must be filed no later than five P M. on Tuesday, January seventh, twenty twenty-five in the office of the School District Clerk, eighty-two fifty-five West Forest Hill Avenue, Franklin, Wisconsin. Nerd, notice is further given that if a primary is necessary, the primary election will be held on Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Annual Health Report, Mr. Ekman, please. Good evening. Nice to see everybody tonight. Before talking about the health report, I want to take a moment to introduce, um, our new nurse, Laura Plautz. I'm going to give her a moment just to introduce herself.
Hi, everyone. Um, like I said, Laura Plautz. I've been a nurse at Children's Wisconsin for the last seventeen years. Um, and I'm excited to just bring all my knowledge and everything I can do to the people of Franklin. Um, I do have two kids in the Franklin School District, so I'm somewhat familiar. Um, so I just know it'll be a great opportunity.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. We're excited to have Laura start on Monday and start onboarding her to Franklin. Um, Ms. Yang is not able to join us tonight. She had a family emergency. Um, she really did want to be here and talk about, uh, the, her investment in the work, um, of the health program. So I'll do my best to present. If there's some questions I can't answer, we'll follow up after the fact. So the purpose of the health report, um, is really just to provide an overview of the scope of the health services that the health and nursing team provides in Franklin. And, um, there are some key points here that I just want to emphasize to the board um, about the work that, uh, goes on every day to support our students with health needs and other health needs that arise in the district. So, um, some of the, uh, bigger work that's been accomplished over the last year is highlighted here. But one thing to call out that the nurses worked very hard on is the Stop the Bleed, um, kits that have been, um, installed in every classroom and the training that's gone with that, um, just for more emergency preparedness. We have staff that know how to use those kits and respond in the event that they're needed. Another big lift for the health team is supporting the health conditions of students. Um, things have been pretty stable in terms of the different types of health needs that students have. Um, there haven't been dramatic shifts over the last year. But I would just mention that diabetes maintenance continues to be, uh, an area of need that consumes a lot of time for our nursing staff. There have been, from time to time, there are some emergency situations that our, uh, nursing and health team has assisted with. Um, in general, that's in conjunction with emergency services from, uh, the Franklin Fire Department. But, uh, they are often, um, right there if there has been an accident. Typically, those are injuries, um, that might occur in a P E class or something that's happened at high school. And, um, our, our team is there to support. Uh, concussions, as mentioned in the report, that overall is a big concern, especially for young people and, um, anyone involved in athletics. And our nurses are sometimes called on to consult in situations where there may be, um, the possibility of a concussion. And then, um, another major lift of our school nurses is to continue to provide support and training to students with complex medical needs. Um, they consult with our I E P teams and our five oh four teams, um, to make sure that we are providing the training to staff in order to, uh, meet those health needs. And then, um, our nurses also supervise the health rooms. Um, and if you look into the details of the report, you see that the health rooms see a lot of traffic over the course of the year. So, um, that is, uh, an important service and support that the health, uh, our health team provides. Over the course of the year. So, um, that is, uh, an important service and support that the health, uh, our health team provides. So I will try to take questions, please, if you have any.
Um, not a question so much, but I, um, you know, first of all, welcome. Thanks for being here. Um. Like, I, I would just say like nurse to nurse, like I'm a nurse. I've taken care of patients in a variety of settings. This is such a unique role. You know, it's one thing to be a nurse on a hospital unit and take care of, you know, five, six, maybe eight patients or something for. Eight, twelve hours, um, you know, whatever it is. Our nursing team here is managing essentially over four thousand students, two hundred and, I forget, two hundred and fifty very specific students, but. They're responsible for that across not just one hospital unit, but across an entire city, seven buildings. And I just, I want to thank you. Please don't run away before Monday. But I want to thank you and, and Chong for the work that you are, are doing and the care that you're giving to our students because it is. It's a Herculean task. I'm not really even sure, like my brain doesn't comprehend how you can do it. It's so. I know, I'm not, it's like, don't, don't run away before Monday. But anyway, I just, I really think it's important to highlight that because there are so, I mean, you can read the report, but you can think about. Uh, just how many complex needs there are and from a very simple, you know. Scraped knee or something to like life-threatening allergies and whatever else. You, you are first responders. You don't know what's happening and you are training all of the district employees to be able to respond to those. Emergency events. And I just, I think that we, we can't thank you enough, um, for the work that you are doing. And I guess my only, like, real question regarding that is how, you know, we have had, we have had turnover in the last year in this role. So how are we supporting these two people doing that huge task? I just want to, like. Is there anything specific that you are doing differently or will add or continue or whatever for. Making sure that our two nurses feel completely supported in their work?
Yeah, we, we meet as a health team on a regular basis, um, to make sure that we're, um, working together and identifying any concerns that are coming up and that. There's regular communication so that if the, the nurses identify something that, um, we need to talk about or that we need to plan for. Um, we have some regular communication. Um, I also come out and observe and work to, um. Help, uh, understand and implement kind of this delegated nursing model that we have. Um, and we were, Laura and I were just talking about it before the meeting where, um, it really is similar to like a home healthcare kind of model. Where, uh, the training is so important and working with parents and working with staff is so important. And so, um. It's about building confidence and it's about collaboration, um, to make it all work. And so. Um, when things are a little bit sticky, it's important that the nurses feel supported. Um, so we're working on that and making sure we have. Um, a collaborative culture to support what they're doing.
Thanks.
Is the idea of, does, um, you used the phrase delegated nursing? Is that what he said? Is that how you, I'm just curious, like, for example, the twenty kids with diabetes, like, they're probably getting blood sugar checks. Three, four times a day and then needing insulin throughout the day. Is that something the nurses directly supervise or is that something that's delegated out?
It's, it's a delegated service. Um, what's, and it is complex, but generally what we're seeing is students have a device. That's a, like a port. And, uh, it's digital now where, um, the nurse has the, has the app. And then there's, there's conversations if blood sugar's going up and down. Parents also have the app, so everything is, um, like live data. There's the old-school prick and check, um, but i- if, if there's a problem with the technology, we can fall back on that. But. Um, in general, if we see a change in the data, um, or the nurses, I'm, I'm not watching the live data, but, uh, our team, when that happens. There's conversations and, and follow-up and then, then it gets loaded and you, you both probably know this better than I do, but it gets loaded into the app. And then that insulin is automatically injected. So it's changed. And I think what's complicated is some of the devices are unique and it's, it's learning the devices and getting confident with that.
You have, I'm sorry, you have people at the building, so if Laura and Chong are not. You know, if they're here at the E C C and something's happening at Ben Franklin, there's somebody trained at Ben Franklin who can be an immediate responder while they're getting over there to do.
Correct.
Can I ask one other quick question? I'm just looking at the pie charts on whatever page that is about. I, the, what, what constitutes events? Just seems like there's been an uptick of injuries in general. I, I don't know what the raw numbers are. We just have percentages, but any thoughts as to why kids are getting injured more while at school?
I, I don't, um, the way the data was reported to me that the conditions have been more or less stable. Um, so if I'm looking at the right page.
Thirty percent of the reports are injuries versus, I guess it was twenty.
Okay.
I don't know. It just looks a lot bigger. No, but it is, it is an increase.
If that's something that you'd like us to follow up on.
Yeah, I want to know. I, I, I guess I'm curious why kids are getting injured more, if they actually are.
Cause it's really just a share of the.
Right.
Something whether went down to come.
Right, if the total number of incidents actually went down, then.
You can do a quick check to see what went down, did you? Did you do a quick check to see what went down? Cause I see you compared what went up.
No, I didn't.
I have a question.
Linda, please.
On the office visit chart, it's quite a, a range between the, the, uh, the grade schools. From Robinwood at three thousand eight hundred visits versus Pleasant View at nine hundred and twenty-seven. Is there consistency in reporting or?
Yes, that is, uh, a feature of the data. There are, um, some conversations about what gets documented and what doesn't. Um, so there's some work to do there in terms of data reporting, but, um. You're right in noticing that we do have, uh, much more reports of health room visits in, in one of our buildings.
Okay, so.
Yeah, go ahead, Mary.
Um, so just out of curiosity, fainting, L O C is loss of consciousness. I mean, is that, any of that attributable to not getting enough to eat? You know, is there a time of day when this happens? I, I mean, I, I just can envision kids kind of passing up because they're not eating enough. Um, and I just wonder if that's a, the etiology of this or if it's something else, because I went to twelve years of school. I don't think any. New ever fainted, but this seems like a pretty big number.
I, I think, I think part of this might be, I think that these are small numbers, right? It's, it's.
We don't have the gross number.
The times that, the times that the, the E M Ts were called. So it's like twenty, it's like twenty incidents across this many. So the pipe, I would guess that's because it's small numbers that this is why it looks this way. It's not like there's a hundred kids that fainted. It's twenty percent.
Maybe the feedback is next year on that chart, it would be helpful to have the raw numbers.
Okay. You're referring to the pie charts?
Yes.
Okay.
And just curiosity, this, this data is all from last school year, so.
That's correct.
It, just in terms of timing of the report, would it be more like relevant to get this information? Like if we're going, if it's the school year that ends in June, could we maybe have this overall? I know it was delayed this year for a variety of reasons, but could we maybe have this report in? August versus waiting until December, so that if there were any changes that you wanted to make or anything like that, we would have better ability to do that. I don't know. It just feels like. We're looking at these numbers, but they're six months old already.
I thought on that would be, usually it's been November. And so the only reason it was moved to December this year was it wasn't delayed. It was just, we could have a new person here and double down. Um, but typically it's been in November. If we wanted to move it up, nurses aren't here all summer, so to have it in August, I would say probably isn't reasonable. Um, but we could say maybe October, um, or September, if that's something. Part of it's been balancing out the meetings. Last year too, there was requests from the board, like some meetings get too stacked. So I think we can definitely adjust it to wherever. It's just an annual report. Um, I would just say August might be tricky.
Sure.
The timing, but we could do September or October.
Anybody else? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome. I hope you come back on Monday.
Thank you.
All right, financial audit report, uh, Mr. Kromy, please.
Uh, I'd like to welcome David Minch from Kerber Rose. David is our lead auditor, um, handling, um, our audit report. So he's going to go over. Whole bunch of information tonight. Um, I just want to say we had an unmodified, which is a clean opinion. Um, so that's, I don't even know how many years in a row, but many, so.
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, well, thank you. Andy, as, as Andy mentioned, my name is David Minch. I'm one of the government audit shareholders at Kerber Rose. Um, and tonight we're going to go over just kind of the, the thousand-foot view of the financial highlights, uh, for the year ended June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, but first and foremost, I just wanted to recognize the work that Andy and Michelle and the rest of the team does to prepare for the audit. It's a very quick turnaround, um, due to D P I's requirements to get this audit completed within essentially a month and a half after the fiscal year end. Um, once again, this is our second year working with the district, but when we showed up, everything was reconciled, everything was ready. Um, any requests that we have were responded to in a very timely manner. So, um, very much appreciated from our standpoint. Um, anytime we work with a client, client, we'd like to make sure it's a collaborative partnership so that we can do the audit as efficiently as possible. And, um, you know, from my standpoint, my staff standpoint, it went very well again this year, so. All right, the first slide that we'll cover here are the audit results. Um, we actually issue three reports, um, that are embedded within the annual financial report. Uh, the first one, which is towards the beginning of the annual financial report, is the independent auditors' report. Um, that's essentially why the school district and any other municipality in the state of Wisconsin has an audit done. And that is to receive an opinion on your financial statements. As Andy alluded to, um, there was, we issued a cleaner, unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that we can provide on a set of financial statements as auditors. Um, the second report that we issue is the, uh, compliance report over the federal and state, um, awards and expenditures. Uh, since the district expends over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal expenditures in a given year, you're required to have a federal single audit. Um, and also a state single audit. Both of those are compliance audits. Um, so those audits entail a lot of detailed testing to make sure the expenditures claimed under the grant are allowable expenditures. Um, and I'm happy to report that that was a clean report. There was no issue, no issues of non-compliance noted. And then the last report is the internal control report, um, over financial reporting. As auditors, we're not required to audit the district's internal controls, but we're required to take them into account while we're planning and performing the audit. Um, and anytime we identify a weakness, we evaluate it to see if it meets the definition of a significant deficiency. Uh, I'm sorry, a material weakness, a significant deficiency, or simply an other matter. Um, consistent with the past number of years, there is one finding to note, um, and that is considered a significant deficiency. Um, and that is the financial reporting finding. Standards changed about a little over ten years ago now. That's simply stated that you as management are responsible for the fair. Presentation of the annual financial report and with that you're required to prepare that. Um, and so basically to eliminate that finding, er, basically to accomplish that, if you cannot prepare them. You can either contract with a third party to prepare the annual financial report or contract with your auditor. Um, every district that I work on in the state of Wisconsin, um, we work with fifty-eight districts, um, at Kerber Rose. Every single one of them receives this finding simply due to the fact that we assist with the completion of the annual financial report. So. Um, I like to treat this more as a reminder that we assist with the preparation, but you are ultimately responsible for the fair presentation of it. All right, um, next we'll talk about some of the numbers, um, in the annual financial report. Um, kind of the one thing that I like to focus on is the general fund, since that is the main operating fund. Um, but more specifically, the unassigned fund balance within that general fund. Uh, that unassigned fund balance is really the operating reserves of the district, uh, to cash flow itself. Um, I've got a number of, um, percentages listed here, but I'm sure you're well aware of the fact that, um. You know, most of the significant aid or property tax money does not come into the district until, uh, the November, December, and even later timeframe. So there's a significant amount or significant timeframe, um, within the beginning of the school year. Um, where the district doesn't see a lot of money coming in the door, but a lot of money goes out the door. So, um, the district had just over twenty-five million. In unassigned fund balance within the general fund, uh, set aside to serve as, you know, the operating reserve. Um, and one thing we always get asked is, you know, how do we compare to other districts? Is our general fund in a good position? Uh, a- and the tricky thing is there, there really isn't a right or wrong answer, because although every school district has the same purpose, they all function very differently. Um, within the state and how they, how they conduct operations. Um, but one thing that we've kind of evaluated. Um, you know, based on our experience is that most districts need a reserve of twenty-five to thirty-five percent of expenditures in a current year. To really, um, have sufficient reserves to cash flow itself. Um, I've got some more slides on this, but the percentage that the district was at, at June thirtieth, again, this is a point in time, was approximately thirty-seven point five percent. So, uh, you guys are a large district, so we typically like to see twenty-five to thirty-five percent. Um, I have been recommending up to forty, even forty-five percent for some districts, just because inflation is still very high. Um, and you know, our revenues are somewhat stagnant. So the costs keep going up, but we can't find, you know, we can't generate too much additional revenue. To offset that change in cost. Uh, this slide is just some historical information for you. Um, the dark blue or black line is the unassigned fund balance. Which as I, I mentioned, um, two thousand twenty-four is all the way to the right here. Um, that was about twenty-five million dollars. And the, um, blue line is the general fund expenditures, which for twenty twenty-four. Um, was approximately sixty-six point million. Um, so when you look at this graph, you know, we've seen some, um, very good consistencies year over year. Um, you know, and I mentioned that increase in, uh, percentage of unassigned fund balance, you can see it, it's very slight. Um, but there is an increase in expenditures every year. Most of that is just simply due to the cost of everything. Uh, the next slide is just a, a slide that shows the percentage of unassigned fund balance to general fund expenditures. Um, this looks like it's a significant decrease this year, um, when in reality it was approximately two percent this year. Um, so again, you're still well within, you know, i- i- in an acceptable level from my standpoint of having sufficient reserves set aside. Uh, the next couple of slides are, these are screenshots right out of the district's annual financial report. Um, this is the balance sheet for the governmental funds. Um, just a couple of things I like to highlight here. Um, you know, the general fund's total fund balance was approximately twenty-five point eight million dollars, much of which is that unassigned component. Um, the long-term capital improvement fund that did end the year with approximately five point five million dollars, which, you know, you'll use. Um, for future capital needs going forward. And then the overall total governmental fund, fund balance is approximately forty point one million dollars this year.
Uh, excuse me, can you reference a page number? It's never a little hard to read.
Yep, let me, um. I actually opened right up to it. This is PDF page number eleven or printed page number six in the annual financial report. All right, we can jump to the next slide. This is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balance, um, or in other words, the income statement, uh, for the governmental funds. Um, on this slide, you can see that the general fund overall fund balance did increase approximately two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars this year. And the total overall gover- governmental fund, fund balance increased almost one point two million dollars this year. Um, a couple of other things that I've highlighted on this page, um, one being the principal payment in the debt service fund. Um, the district did, um, of, did, I'm sorry, the district did do a debt defeesance this year. Were paid off approximately just over four million dollars this year. Um, a very positive aspect to the overall operations of the district to be able to do that, the interest savings, the future interest savings that the district recognized. Is, is very substantial. So, um, I just wanted to highlight out, I think that's a very great thing when districts do, do take advantage of that. Um, and then the other item that I have highlighted here is just the transfer into Fund Forty-Six for the future capital needs. Um, the district was able to transfer just over three point one million dollars to that fund for future needs.
If you have questions, you want them now or later?
Uh, you can ask them right now, sure.
So that three million dollar transfer, that of course would impact ultimately the, the fund balance. Numbers you talked about before. If that number were less, unassigned fund balance would go up. And if it were more?
Y- yes, you, you are correct in that, um, you know, the transfer to Fund Forty-Six is an aidable transfer for the district and so. Um, a lot of districts really, y- you know, and if you were to look at your budget on this page, you know, you do essentially budget a transfer to Fund Forty-Six. Uh, where you're going to make that contribution. So depending on the outcome of the general fund, typically that does vary. Um, from year to year, but you know, it's, getting it into that fund is an aidable transaction, so it is advantageous for districts to do. from year to year, but you know, it's getting it into that fund is an aidable transaction, so it is advantageous for districts to do that.
I, I guess I'm not quite sure what you mean by aidable, so that.
So when you look at the aid formula, and Andy, you, you, you probably know the aid formula a little bit more than I do, but that is, you know, it's, it's an expenditure that's counted towards the aid formula. So you do get categorical aid, I think it is, right?
So it counts towards the general aid using the revenue limit. So essentially, when you transfer to Fund 46, DPI recognizes it an expense in the year of the transfer. And 46, when you spend it actually out of 46, DPI doesn't necessarily care in terms of that. It's already counted as an expenditure towards your overall.
But it comes when it goes in.
Correct, the year of the transfer.
And we budget for this, or is it something we kind of judge after we, the year's done?
So part of this is at the end of the year. Part of this is our CIP. So as a reminder, we switched our CIP to run out of Fund 46, so that 1.265 million is an automatic transfer. We took, the number's gonna escape my mind, but part of our technology budget for infrastructure, things like Chromebooks, was moved to Fund 46. Again, that just allows the flexibility of the January, or the June 30th date and to not have to have it specifically in by June 30th. So Andy Daniels can run projects for 24, 25 at any point in 24, 25. And if they happen to sneak over June 30th for whatever reason, we're gonna be just fine. Same with Luann, she can order her Chromebooks, and if they come in after June 30th, like not a big deal. If they come in before June 30th, not a big deal either. So a good portion of it is just transferring in to manage those particular departments. And then the rest comes in at year end. As you know, over the last few years, we've also been dealing with ESSER funds. So we've had, we've tried not to budget those as much as possible so that the one-time funds, when they run out, we're not sitting here on a cliff trying to figure out how we're going to backfill that. So some of those funds that we've brought in through expenditures that oftentimes we probably would have purchased anyways, some of that, some of those now are self to fill that as well.
I would say curriculum's another one also. Sometimes curricular resources you're adopting, right? If we bring them to the board in May, if they're not in our hands before June 30, putting that money, some of the curricular budget in Fund 46 also allows that flexibility with dates on their shipping end that we can't control.
Thank you.
All right. This slide here is just a screenshot of the budget actual for the general fund. I think this is a very useful page within the annual financial report. Here, you can see that the original budget was essentially a balanced budget. And then the actual results were definitely exceeded that with a positive change in fund balance of approximately 218,000 dollars. There really isn't anything else on this page that I think warrants additional discussion. The board does a great job at budgeting and takes a very conservative approach to the budgets. Everything looked good from our standpoint with this. And then the last slide, I just always like to make boards aware of, you know, what is your legal limit for new debt? Any school district in the state of Wisconsin can levy up to, I'm sorry, can issue debt up to 10% of the equalized valuation set forth by the Department of Revenue. So with that calculation, the district could have up to 472 million. District is clearly well below that with approximately just under 35 million in outstanding debt. So the legal margin for new debt is approximately 437,000 dollars. Again, I just think that this is a very positive operating result for the district and just to highlight that in amongst, in correlation with the operating results of the general fund, so.
And as a reminder, this is pre-refereendum, so this is June 30th, 2024. So that'll obviously change during the 24, 25 year with the passing of the referendum.
In the place.
There's a lot of notes and information, pensions, all that stuff. What, what is your role in looking at that? And what should the board be paying attention to if anything? Well, we should be paying attention to something.
Sure. So let me just, just refresh my memory with what exactly the district has. So the district does participate in the Wisconsin retirement system. And so the district has to record your proportionate share of that total liability. You know, realistically, this is, it's, the correct, it's wrong to say it's a fictitious liability, but just say the district were to cease participation in the Wisconsin retirement system tomorrow, right? It, it would never happen, but your liability would essentially be zero. And so when GASB 68 took effect about 10 years ago as well, you know, the Wisconsin retirement system is a very well-funded plan. You look at some of the other states and they're very poorly funded. And so they wanted that to come to light that these plans are not essentially self-sustaining. So with the Wisconsin retirement system, you know, you're required to make your statutorily required contributions, and that's the only thing that you can control in regards to that. So, which the district does and always has, there's really no issues from our standpoint with that. In regards to the total OPEB, you know, other post-employment benefits and the pension liability, you know, that's determined by an actuary, which the actuary helps determine how much, you know, you know, you, you're gonna pay in a given year and helps project that. There really wasn't anything alarming from our standpoint, you know, that there isn't a trust set up for that. So it's really just kind of a pay-as-you-go type of liability for the most part. So you know, I, I don't see any significant issues. And again, the actuary kind of projects what they anticipate that being. So we, as auditors, I mean, we do rely on the work of the actuary and so.
And do we have, that's only updated every other year, or is it every year?
So there's a table update. The, that, there's a requirement to have an actuary study done every two years, but then in the off years, there's a table update that's done, which is not as comprehensive as a full-blown actuary study.
I just have one other question.
Please.
You did make this, the finding about not preparing our own financial statements.
Yep.
And nobody does that. But do, do you foresee that any time in the future, given current financial software and that, that, that we would see a change in that, that districts would start to do that?
I do not, simply because, I mean, we're up to GASB 101 that takes effect this year. It's not just the, the GAAP basis financial. You also have to make sure that you're preparing these in accordance with the GASB standards. And I mean, it's, we're seeing a lot of audit firms just stop doing governmental audits because understanding these standards is becoming so complex. And so you know, is it, is it possible that there's a program out there that does it in the future? Maybe, but ultimately then, just as an example, Andy would like to have to, would likely have to take training to make sure that he's understanding that information and able to, you know, basically make sure that these financial statements are materially correct and presented in accordance with standards. So I, given the resources and the avail, the availability of all of our clients, I just don't foresee, even if there is a software, I just don't foresee that coming back in-house, really. Yes.
Isn't it kind of a better check and balance anyway, to have you doing part of it and Andy doing part of it? And, or is that not, am I missing that?
Well, I mean, everything presented in the annual financial report is based on numbers that Andy and his team provide. You know, we do the audit to make sure the numbers are right. You know, our audit software just very easily allows us to essentially compile the statements. And then I, I mean, you know, Michelle and Andy do a very thorough job at making sure that these, these numbers tie out to the trial balance. And that, you know, we didn't, we didn't post a journal entry, not provide it to them. They didn't post a journal entry, not give it to us. You know, I, it, it is a good check and balance. I mean, just knowing, I do have two counties that prepare their own financial statements, a substantially larger set of financial statements. But it, it'll take them upwards of a month to compile the whole finance, the annual financial report, so.
Yeah, cuz I, I mean, you read about other districts that run into financial problems, and I implicitly trust Andy. I don't have a financial background. But again, your report certainly is encouraging and reassuring.
Yeah, yeah. Whether we prepare the annual financial report or, you know, one of our clients does, I mean, we're still held to the same standard of making sure what's presented in here is materially correct. You know, anytime we would identify an issue, you know, just as an example, I have one district this year that has $100,000 in unassigned fund balance. You know, I, I issued a going concern opinion for them because I'm not so sure that the longevity for that school district is there. So, you know, we are required by standards to bring things to your attention. You know, e- even things that don't make the report, if there's any recommendations that we have throughout the audit, just on processes, anything of that nature, we're having discussions with Andy, we're having discussions with Michelle. Michelle does a great job at reaching out throughout the year, as does Andy with, you know, hey, this is new, where should we code this, or what are your thoughts on this? So you know, that, that in theory makes the audit that much easier for, for everybody, so. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, thank you much. Thank you very much.
25, 26 school calendar. Ms. Lankour, please.
Good evening. So if you remember back in November, I don't remember what month it is, we previewed the draft for the 25, 26 district calendar, so just seeking approval from the board this evening. And upon your approval, we will distribute that to families so they can start planning for another year.
I move to approve the 2025, 26 calendar as presented.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Mrs. Larson, seconded by Dr. Beer. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Open enrollment seats, Ms. Lankour again, please.
Sure. So this is the first read of our open enrollment seats for the 25, 26 school year. This is brought before the board annually for approval. Essentially in terms of process, I partner with Andy as well as Leo to determine the available seats that we'll have within our grade levels for the upcoming school year. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Yeah. So under the enrollment projections, some of these, the numbers exceed what it says the grade level caps are. What's the implication of that?
Trying to see here for.
By grade level, two, 273 enrollment, but 255 grade level cap. So I'm assuming grade level cap means.
Yep, grade level cap is the number of students that you could possibly put within that grade level.
Right.
Okay. And so.
So does that imply we're gonna have to hire another, form another second grade unit or something?
Nope. So those grade level caps, at least 4K through fifth are set at 85% of a classroom. So if we have, we'll use very simple numbers, but if we have 10 classrooms and we're gonna say 20 kids can be in a classroom, so that'd be 200 total students. We're gonna stop filling seats at 170, 85% of that 200. So that if we have new residents moving in, we have plenty of room for those residents to come in. If we only have, say, 155 4K students, we'd say, we'll have 15 seats available. That'll get us to 170, still leave that gap of available seats for resident students. So the grade level caps for 4K through five really follow how many sections are you having? With again, that idea that open enrollment doesn't add staff, but it says if we have seats available, the lights are already on, the teacher's already in front of the classroom. Let's fill those seats with some bodies, cuz that will help us generate some revenue. When we take a look at six, seven, and eight, we're really trying to figure out what is really the ideal middle school size. So for the last couple of years, we've used 350. We felt in talking together that we can move that to 360. At high school, 375 is what we've used the last couple of years, but we've very, been very easily managing classes of 400 to 420 students without a problem. I don't wanna say totally without a problem, but like, it, it's been easily managed at the high school, having enough class space and opportunities for students and making sure we have sections. So we felt if we move that to 385, we're still gonna be within that range. And really, the 14 students you see in 10th grade really follows what was last year available in 9th grade, which was like 11 or 12 or something like that. So I mean, that class is just a smaller class compared to all the others. So again, 4K through five is really based specifically on number of sections. Six through 12 doesn't necessarily run like that, so we look at a class size as a whole.
And I'll say to my understanding is that even though you're offering so many seats, but we have not been able to fill all the open enrollment seats, because even last year, I think we were still short. So, you know, I think it's a good business to offer open enrollment, but hopefully we can recruit more students in districts so that brings some more revenue.
Well, if my reading is right, we approved 139 last year at this time. Is that right?
Correct, yep.
And now we're approving 104.
Correct.
So less than last year. So some of this is related to the fact that you changed the cap, right? Some of these are possible because you changed the cap. Was that, did that happen?
Like grade seven would be 16 instead of 26 because that went from 350 to 360. And 10th grade would have been four instead of 14, moving from 375 to 385. 4K through five really is built on total number of sections. So if we have 10 sections, times X number of kids, times 85% sets that number. And we take a look at class sizes that are rolling forward, as well as projections at every elementary school by grade level. So what is, taking Ben Franklin as the example, what is the typical change, or first of all, what's the typical number of 4K students that enter Ben Franklin? What is the typical change from 4K to 5K? So we take current 4K and then say the typical change is plus 10, for example. So now we have X number of students plus 10 moving into 5K. We take a look at this year's 5K and say, what is typical growth from 5K to first grade at Ben Franklin? And then we take that calculation. And then we take it for all those grade levels, and we figure out how many sections of each grade at Ben Franklin do we need to run to just fill that? What is the typical class plus the growth from year to year? And then that is really where we starting point. So sometimes we might have two teachers in 5th grade, but we have 65 students. So we're automatically gonna make that into three sections because 29 is our, our cap. So we're automatically gonna make three sections, which is gonna open some students up, say, at Ben Franklin. But then we partner that with all five grade level, or all five elementary schools together. And that's where we get that aggregate number of total students. And then once enrollment, or once we cast those forward and truly see where we are in May, that helps you start determining where are you gonna allow students to go and then say, we're gonna offer you. So we might have room at Ben Franklin, we might not. Countrydale, we know is like, we've seen the MD Rauffer study. We know that that's packed. We don't have a ton of students that can go in Countrydale really at any grade level, so we, we're probably not putting students there. But there are some other grade levels or some other schools that have just larger needs, cuz their classes sit right on the border of having a third section, we're staying at two.
Yeah, Linda, please.
So I know that we have some vacant classrooms. We only have two sections at Ben Franklin. How does that happen then, given the way that we want to run full? So at some point, you dropped a classroom. When does that?
Little grows, our population within the city grows. So with like what Andy's saying is we're not going to say we have an empty classroom at Ben Franklin, so we're gonna open up.
No, I understand that. That doesn't make sense, cuz it's not a teacher, you have to hire a teacher. But my question is, how did we get to the point where we had the vacant classroom? And it's not, we don't have to spend a lot of time with that, cuz this is really about open seats. But I'm just curious how.
I can't speak to how it was done before. I know that we've put a formula in place that helps us take a look at exactly where we are today, project what it looks like next year, and then that helps us determine what seats are available. I can't speak to how it was done before, or if it was.
We'd probably start to get into a conversation about boundaries, quite honestly, if we're gonna look at that, cuz that's why you have Countrydale growing to the point where it's gonna outgrow the building and Ben Franklin not. It's about where boundaries are right now.
I think, like, the one thing, thinking back to the MD Raufers study, and when they explained that to us, there are some of our neighborhoods that are in that turnover stage, right? Their students have gone through school. They're now out of school, and they're still living in the home where you have newer homes or newer subdivision coming in. They're typically bringing in younger kids, so they're gonna be there for the next 18 years. But at some point, that's gonna flip over too, and those homes aren't gonna have students, but they're still gonna be maintaining those homes. And I think he used a, a number of 30 years is what a typical turnover is of a subdivision or an area, however he breaks them apart, right, an area. But in 30 years, that will turn over and all some kids will start coming in again. Kids are gonna phase out, and then 30 years, that whole kind of cycle starts again. And obviously, that's a generalization of lots of communities and studies put together, but kind of that idea of we grow, we have kids, kids move out, we stay, all of a sudden, we sell our house or whatever have you. And now the kids start to cycle through that part again.
Lexicatus.
All right, anybody else? Questions? Comments? Thank you. Coherence Plan Midyear Report, Dr. Mo, please.
Thank you. I put a couple things.
Thank you, I put a couple things in front of you that I just wanted that were at your spot tonight. Two things that I'll reference, I wanted to make sure you see, the first one is there was a request made, um, to have the detailed numbers for the college and career readiness numbers, so they'll see, that's the one with the two columns with the little circles. That is where those numbers come from, I'll get to that later. And the second one that we're gonna talk about is, there's been some differences this year with how the DPI scored the state report card. So they put out this publication about, um, how to talk to your community members about the state report card changes. So I know sometimes you are approached by community, that handout came from the DPI. If you want talking points, I would not expect you to field that, you could always refer it to me, but they did that for that purpose. I think people asked for it, cause there were some changes, so those are for you to keep. As I kind of explained in that situation report, with the new coherence plan, there's a rhythm still for how the data comes. So we have, um, four, well, five metrics that we can share with you this time around, what we call, this is our mid-year review. And then all of those metrics will come with the score at the end of the year. So, you are not seeing a lot of those metrics today, you might have expected that, but you're not. That's kinda purposeful for how the rhythm is, how the data comes in, where we get those metrics from. So today, the big one you're seeing, this is the only metric that we would score mid-year, is the state report card, because they come out at the time when our mid-year update comes. So the first section is the state report card, um, I wanna be sure to answer Mrs. Witkowski's questions as I go through. So there was the question of, do all students take the ACT? Yes, all students, that's the required state test for juniors. So for high school, the data that's going into the state report card is pre-ACT at ninth and tenth grade, um, ACT at eleventh grade. We take the state score, so I think it's March thirteenth this year, when all eleventh graders take it. Some families choose to pay to have their kids take it again, so you can just go and sign up at a testing center. Research shows you get a higher score the more times you take it, but for purposes of our metric in the state report card, we are counting what score did the kids get on that day in March, when the whole school district takes it. Mrs. Witkowski, my guess is you were thinking of the SAT, so that is the test you sometimes see that is not required. So that would totally be family's choice, it has no bearing on the state report card at all. The other thing with the scoring change is, so I'm gonna try to do this in as real terms as possible, and don't ask me to speak to the math, cause I'm not sure I could. We had new standards in ELA and math, so they took the forward exam and redid it. When those scores came back, they did a score adjustment, meaning they lowered what would count as, um, below basic, basic proficient advanced. So they took those bars, so you don't get a point for your score, you get a point for those thresholds, the four categories, right? So even if you're one point away from the threshold above, it doesn't matter for the scoring, you get points based on what bucket your score falls in. They lowered that, on an average year, about half the state increases their achievement scores. That's a rough, a, a rough guesstimate, overall achievement goes up in a, about fifty percent of districts in a normal year. When they did this adjustment, about ninety-nine percent of districts had an increased achievement score when they lowered that. So then they decided to take that and do a scale score adjustment for the state report cards, meaning they tried to take everything and equalize it, so you didn't have this dramatic swing of scores. So for us, that meant for four or five elementary schools, we got the exact same achievement score this year as we did last year, even though it wasn't exactly the same. You're looking at me like, I, I feel you, I'm just trying to put it, so, it's to make it more comparable, of course, we would want the scores to go up. I'm not making excuses that they didn't go up, but if you dig into it and it looks funny, there was a purposeful scales, scale score adjustment for one year only by the state. That's what that handout that I gave you kinda talks about. We have had zero parents, I asked the, the principals today inquire across the district about the scale score adjustment, so it's probably a really large deal to us, it seems to be anecdotally less of a big deal to parents in their experience in our schools, for what that's worth, we have had no parents inquire and wanna learn about that. We did provide the resource, but just so you know. So largely, our scores this year on the state report card are based on growth, cause remember, they tried to equalize that achievement category. There's four categories, achievement, growth, target group growth, and on track. As a general rule, where we didn't grow where we needed to, is math growth. So our math growth was stagnant or not making progress. People ask me like, what, if I could sum it up in a nutshell, I would say after looking at all the details, our math grows. It doesn't mean kids lost ground in math, but they kinda held constant, and not enough kids bumped up to that higher level to count as more points, if that makes sense. So, you can see that across the board, we had all but one of our schools exceed expectations, we had one school in meats. That's not the first time we've had a meats expectations, if remember, two years ago, the middle schools in meats moved to exceed. We had Ben Franklin that wasn't exceed, moved to meats. Again, that's a bucket, it's not your score, it's do you make the threshold to move to the next category? So I'll pause there, that is my very quick, without getting in the weeds of understanding the scores. Does that kind of make sense for what's happened? Yes?
It makes sense, but do you foresee a time when the scoring is consistent from year to year, such that we can make a comparison? I feel like...
Every year.
From the state, yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be nice, we, we keep giving that feedback.
Okay, Andy's laughing at me, so I guess the answer is no.
I'm not sure, you know, and I had a great conversation with Mike, I hold him on you saying, like, we could go round and round, I could do workshop after workshop about understanding the, the scores, but ultimately, it comes down to what are we doing about it, right? Like, so, it's one measure, it's a lagging data point, it's the one the public loves, but probably the one to us by the time we get the data doesn't mean as much to react to, but it is an apples-to-apples comparison. We scored very highly when you compare us to other Milwaukee County, I think you saw the Journal Sentinel article, so our scores were not bad. Where we lost some points is in that growth area. Sometimes that happens with districts with higher achievement, right, to, to, to bump those kids up, but I am not gonna try to make excuses. Do we wish that every year we, all those scores were going up? Yes, that would be our ultimate goal. So I put in there some of the strategic priorities, um, just about what we're working on, you all know about the ELA work. Math at the middle school is one place where two years ago, they made a ton of ground, this year, they held constant. So, we put some, we already knew that based on math scores, we knew that before four, or before forward scores, scores came back, right? You know that, they're just not moving, so, we put in place, if you had, do we have any middle school parents left? No, we all moved, they have something in math called Mafia and Stream, for instance, so there's some different levels. You can add to the curriculum that are part of it, that we weren't using, that we now are. We talked about, I had a question about, um, ACT and pre, or excuse me, AP and the pre-AP classes and the move to that. So, your question, Mrs. Witkowski, the more rigorous instruction that you expose kids to, the generally, the better they do on the ACT. So that was one justification, move to, every kid gets pre-ACT classes, with the hope that they'll wanna jump that rigor bar and take an AP class, they're not required to. And that is a place where we're looking very good, a ton more AP tests taken, AP is not the only route for kids, but when I think about it, if I have my parent hat on, when I see a lot more industry credential type opportunities, combined with a lot more AP tests taken, we might be hitting all across the continuum in some way, so more kids' experiences are what they need it to be at high school. We asked about, your question about data tracking for AP classes, so are we following males and females, I think was your question, right, Mrs. Witkowski?
Curious why that, what was your insight there?
Every data point, we disaggregate on the same five areas, gender, race, socio-economic status, disability status, and language status. So that's just the different ways you can sort kids to make sure there weren't gaps. We had a huge gap in students receiving free and reduced lunch, taking AP classes, but not taking AP exams. So we did a lot of cleanup on the front end, that we got that sharing form done, we pay for the exam, we make sure that's happening early, that gap has closed. We had a ton more girls taking AP classes and taking AP tests than boys, that's been a trend. We've closed that, so, that's just about your kind of roll your sleeves up and start talking to kids and, and bringing the classes to them, so I would not, I would think it'd be unfair to characterize that we did that, it was a problem area, but when we look at our data, we think, huh, if we have about equal numbers of males and females in our school district, we would expect that about equal numbers of males and females take AP classes. Why is that? Does that make sense? So we didn't specially disaggregate that, we disaggregate, I could tell you any data point between males and females, right? We look at that all the time to make sure it's representing who our kids are.
I think, of course, when I heard on the radio, it's not Franklin, but I think nationally, the math scores went down. It's nationally, it's a national, uh, and for, you know, um, looking at the report cards, you know, since saying to move to Wisconsin from Chicago, we always, I think, they're good on math, and we were kind of nationally and district-wise and state-wise, English was the lagging behind. Most of the time, kids did very good on math, you know? So it's definitely a puzzle that all of a sudden, when we were so proud of doing math so well, nationally and in a state level and a district level, all of a sudden, you know, our numbers have dwindled. And I'm hoping definitely that, you know, it being an important part of the ACT, we definitely will be able to kind of, you know, I'd, definitely, also, we have to understand that kids are kids, not every year we are going to have kids who won't, will perform at the same level which we expect to, you know? So, we can provide all the resources and all this, but another day, it's the kids who are taking the test, who are taking the courses and all this stuff, so we have to understand that. It's a fluid situation, we can provide the platform, but it might change, you know, but we have to also encourage, so I think it's important work to do, and we must continue to do that, so.
Well, and I think with the mafia and things, it's, how do you make it appeal? I don't, I don't like math, but if, if it's fun, if it's enjoyable, sorry. But I was good at it, because it was something that, you know, was appealing to me and how it was taught, so it, it sounds like we're availing ourselves of different programs and different, you know, curriculum and things like that, to reach the kids who, you know, might have some aptitude, but it's just not interesting.
That, and I think you speak well, I think universally, for most kids in Franklin, we do great in ELA and math, where we're seeing some fringy data, or less desirable data, is when you're not considered part of that middle, average group. We have to get better at, how do we reach students who are learning English, how do we reach students who have disabilities? How, as we get more diverse, how we teach and how they access destruction has to get more diverse. We're a little late to that game in Franklin, we have probably had a demographic shift more recently than, say, um, an MPS or a Cudahy, or right, they sometimes talk about, um, geographically, right? You have large cities, and then you have first ring suburbs, second ring suburbs, third, third ring suburbs, and I only say the ring, so you can picture it on a map. Things get more diverse, they kinda move out from that central city, and, um, diversity sometimes can happen at a different rate. So, when I say late to the game, probably many places in Franklin have looked relatively the same until recently, right? And, and so now there's different things, and people have to learn to teach in different ways. My kids go to school in the Berlin, same thing in New Berlin, right? Okay, we're doing things a little bit differently that teach to the average, kids will just learn it, that, that, this doesn't work. Anyone who works in education isn't happening anymore. So I think we do a great job with the core, we have to do a better job at, how do we get everybody else, right? Kids are, are not as homogeneous as they used to be anywhere, they're just not, so.
And also, nationally, it has, it's a trend where girls are taking more AP classes, more, entering to more colleges, education-wise, all this stuff, so it's not something different to Franklin, it's a national, um, phenomena where the girls are going ahead of the boys, so, boys, please pick up your slack now.
Yes, sir.
So we did the, another metric that we had that we did share is what we call fall map. So map happens fall, winter, spring, so we compare, compare fall to fall, winter to winter, spring to spring, so we have a fall number. If you compare that to last fall number, which again, was the past coherence plan, um, relatively the same, that, I know that is a different number, but we've kinda held constant that sixty percent, do you not like my presentation, Mary?
I love your presentation, I'm getting cold and I wanna go home.
Me too.
To explain that percentile, sixty percent achievement percentile means, if you compare Franklin kids to the national average, forty percent of kids in the nation did score higher, fifty-nine percent of the kids scored lower, so that kinda puts in perspective. If we move into engagement, or that engagement piece, we do have fall metrics to report, I think this is probably one of our biggest celebration areas. To your question, yes, miss it, yes, um, five-hundred-and-fifty-nine includes all staff members, so five-hundred-and-fifty-nine surveys were given out to employees on our employee engagement survey. We got a return rate of almost seventy-five percent, which is really high, if you do any surveying, that's two, three times the amount you hope to get back. Honestly, it's hard to get surveys back, our teachers and staff are really good about it, you feel like you can look at that data and learn something from it, cause it's representative. So we had, um, increases in both learner and employee engagement, I put some celebrations in there, just about places that we're looking. I listed strategic actions, you asked Mrs. Witkowski about moving from Strong to Danielson, so we're required by law to evaluate teachers using a system approved by the state. We used to do, use what's called the Danielson framework, meaning that's one company that owned the rubric, owned the software, owned how you rate teachers. Overall, our staff found it cumbersome, um, difficult to use, felt like they got bogged down in the paperwork. The state also said, if you wanna keep Danielson, you have to switch to the new Danielson. So we decided if we were being asked to switch to the new Danielson, we'd rather move over to what we found more desirable, which is called Strong. It is not vastly different, we are not teaching to different, good teaching is good teaching. Different format, more efficient, um, easier, we reported, I, if you ever met in education to switch something like that, you would expect teachers to absolutely feel very upset. They don't like large-scale changes like this, and checking in with principals, we have had zero pieces of feedback that teachers don't like it, or like it less. Not that they were happy for another change, but they find it more usable, it makes more sense, it's predictable, so it's just taking, what parts can you make easier? We've made that easy, so we're not teaching to different standards, it's just a different vendor and a different platform, to answer your question on that.
State required, state.
It's required to evaluate, yes, we're just using a different software, kind of, for lack of a better discussion to do it. There was a question about at-risk strategies, so previously, Mrs. Witkowski, we were sharing with the board at-risk metrics, which is required by the state for ninth through twelfth graders. Full transparency, that's where the bulk of kids hit at risk, because we, um, they become credit deficient. So usually, it's test scores, attendance, and credit deficiency, since we don't award credits. But we took that metric and completely redid it, that's what was shared with you, I don't know, two weeks, two meetings ago. That's now in the coherence plan, um, so the law says we must do fifth through twelfth, that's why fifth through eighth grade is included. There was a question about, um, college and career readiness, so that job shadowing, you had that question that went up. It's because a lot of kids were job shadowing and they weren't getting credit for it, so any kid who works has that opportunity available to them. With Andy Thompson figuring out, he's come here and told you about how to report better, talk to more kids, get the data. I don't believe that when we were reporting eighty-five, that there weren't probably more like three-hundred doing it, we just got better at gathering the data. The college and career readiness indicator page, you can see there, the biggest drop is, you'll find on your bottom right is capstone participation. Again, that was data cleanup, so we cleaned up that data, a capstone class is a class that has an applied project at the end, if you're not familiar with that term, a little bit different than a industry credential for a job, some similar components. We cleaned up that data, I would consider that our new baseline. If you're looking at that first column, in order to count in that first column, and this is gonna sound complicated, you have to have the first one or the last one, plus another one in between, it's not as self-explanatory as it looks, and for the right-hand column, you have to hit two of those, and that comes, um, from a national site, we didn't make that up. It's a pretty typical way to track, so there was a drop there, you can see there was some increases in some of the lower ones, but we attributed that to, um, that drop in capstone numbers when we cleaned up the data. There's about a swing of thirty-six kids, if that helps you know how fast the percentages swing, so when we cleaned that up, we had a swing of just under forty kids, and that was enough to change the percentage to that point.
Is the industry credentials or certificate, um, swing the other way, similar in... Is the industry credentials or certificate, um, swing the other way, similar in, in data collection?
Yeah, um, so, you may or may not want to hear this. The state used to have us report, if you're in manu-, if, if you're in the manufacturing cluster, there, there was a way that you can report just for the cluster or for each class. So Sue McCutcheon, I don't know if you know, she's like the mark of power school. So she does all things power school. She had a meeting with DPI, worked with Mrs. Hamm at the high school. We cleaned that up too. So where we're at now is more accurate. Same swing. Yes, we have more kids, but I'm trying to be honest. In some ways, it's also been a data cleanup, if I'm really being honest. Like the shadowing, I'd like to say we have two hundred fifty more kids shadowing. They really probably always were. We just weren't collecting the data in the same way.
But it hasn't really helped our college and career-ready scoring though.
It didn't because you still have to hit two of those. So if that's not where the swing was, you're not going to pick up two of those indicators.
Each student has to pick two.
Correct. Each student has to hit two of those things in the right-hand column to count as a. Yes, as ready. Does that answer? I'm, I'm, are we okay on questions so far? That's where we're, anyone else have any other questions? Yes.
What is cut score? I should know, but I don't.
So, um, if the forward exam, let's say, has one hundred points possible, they will go and look and say, if you're at eighty percent, you're advanced, or if you're at eighty correct, you're advanced. If you're at sixty correct, you're proficient. If you're at forty percent. It doesn't go in regular intervals. The math people at DPI and all the things kind of look at how the scores cut in and determine where the buckets cut off. So a cut score is where you would jump those categories, from below basic to basic. What's in between is a cut score.
Breakpoint.
Breakpoint, yeah. Benchmark might be another.
Thank you. So when you mentioned the state made the adjustment, does that also impact student scores when parents see that, that report?
It does, yes.
So, parents got a report that said, everybody's doing better?
Parents got a report, I would say, a, a more accurate way to say it is more parents got a report that their child was advanced.
Okay, because it wasn't adjusted there.
Got a report correct, that their child was proficient, so if you would kind of take that and smoosh it down, those cut scores are a little bit lower. They did the same thing with, they, the DPI did the same thing for ACT. I think we talked about that. They changed what is considered proficient on the ACT. ACT didn't change what's proficient on the ACT, but the state changed for what is in the state of Wisconsin.
ACT is not a national test?
It is a national test, but each state can set their own what they considered proficient in the state.
Are we higher or lower than the? The standard?
We are lower in three and higher in one. So higher in ELA, lower in the other three, was what the adjustment for ACT came to. For what that's, I, I can't even explain why that is. I wouldn't even try, but, so like you think, while they lowered it, while they did all of it, they didn't for ELA. They actually, we have a higher cut score.
Or we just invested in this reading program, so we want to create expectations.
We agree, and that was required by Act Twenty, so we were required by law. Um, that's, that's a big thing if you're out in schools going on now, is so not only was the adoption of a new curriculum required by law, but this new assessment for K through third grade, Pleasant View probably, do you have littles or bigs this year? Bigs, yeah, so you don't see it as much. It's kindergarten through third grade, but that just started December third. It's one-to-one knee to, what they call knee-to-knee testing, which means you're sitting with a kid, showing them a stimuli and they're answering, and the teacher's put, inputting the score. Very good. So if I would say, in a grade level, you're required to do plans for any student who falls below the twenty-fifth percentile on the state-made mandated screener. We have yet to find a grade level across the district that has more than five kids out of the hole, that are not, and that's just a minimum bar, we use the data, but.
I think I saw this somewhere in your report, but you say that there's maybe been a handful of kids that the state screener caught. How is the state screener doing compared to the kids that you've, we've internally identified?
So we have two of five schools that are going. Anecdotally, very few kids were not either already being served by special ed, EL or, or, um, EMLSS. So very, I know of, I'm thinking of one that I can think of at a school that was at the twenty-fourth percentile, needed to be at the twenty-fifth, so we have the ones that are newly appearing seem to be really close to this benchmark that we're learning. Anecdotally, so we're only, we're only a week in, but from what we see. I like data, so I a little, watch the little numbers move every day, so I've done that. And then there were some questions about fiscal stewardship. You had questions about large-scale plan review, Mrs. Witkowski, what changes are being considered? And how would this be different? How would a large-scale review be different than incremental changes? I don't know if you want to answer that, Mr. Cromie, for, you're talking about health plan?
Correct.
Correct.
Yep, so, uh, Lauren and I actually just met today to get our data from twenty-three, twenty-four. So just kind of quick anecdotes, our, um, prescription medication is running at seven percent of our total health spend, so that's actually really good. Ten is a really good metric. We're at seven, so that's pretty awesome. We have more high claimants, not necessarily that hit the threshold of meeting our stop-loss insurance, but kind of fit that fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range than probably we've ever had before. We are trending at like sixty percent above the norms for, uh, babies being born. When compared to similar organizations, whether public or private, that doesn't matter, but similar-sized organizations, so we're trending very high, both last year and actually in the current year that we're in. So we just have these kind of anomalies that aren't necessar-, there's nothing you can do about babies being born. Like, people have babies, that just is. There's nothing you can really do about, um, the people that fit that fifty to seventy-five thousand dollar range that we were talking about. So, really, what will happen in the new year? One, we're going to work on the clinic component, so meeting with vendors in January, starting to figure out exactly what that will look like. We'll wait for a couple more months' data, and we're going to be back around the table at the end of January, beginning of February, trying to figure out what, what are the options that we think we can put in place, because we're still trending very high. Interestingly enough, um, I can't remember what the organization was, but if they cast us forward through the whole year, they predict us to be, have a decrease in healthcare spend overall in twenty-four, twenty-five compared to twenty-three, twenty-four, even though like right now we're really high. So, we have four months of data, um, through October, and we're at about a hundred seventeen percent, meaning we're spending seventeen cents more than per dollar, than every dollar we're bringing in, which is premium. So, hopefully that will lower in our November data, which will come pretty soon here, and then December data, obviously to get us to six months. But I don't have any hard and fasts as far as what we're going to do, um, because we don't have that information yet.
But it's going to be large-scale, not tweaking. Is that what I'm reading here, or?
It's possible.
I think clinic's pretty large-scale, but I mean, when I see that, I want to see how it impacts the bottom line.
Well, that's the idea, the clinic will impact the bottom line.
Right, and you have projections that would support that theory.
Some of it would be, like, some things to be considering, or how do we manage our health risk assessment? Does that become part of clinic requirements? Those are things to consider that other people are doing with their clinic, or how do you turn, uh, and just focusing on the clinic piece, how do you turn that into more of a primary care model? Because again, you're paying a fixed cost for that. So, if no one goes, it costs you X amount of dollars. If a thousand people go every day, it costs you X amount of dollars. But that X is the same, right? So how do we transition people to use that model? And for some, it's going to work great, for some, it's not going to work great. So, how do we get it to be working great for a lot of people? So like you talked about teaching to the norm, like we do that really well. How do we get that norm to be something we do really well for the vast majority of people? Other things might be fine-designed. So, we still want people to go to the doctor, that's really important. We want things caught early. So, um, like unfortunately, we've had some higher health scares that, or higher health issues. Some cannot be caught early, they just are what they are. Some potentially can be. Um, and we have some of our screenings that are not as high as they possibly should be. Uh, and a couple of our, um, diseases will use diabetes, for example, that's the, um, drugs associated with that aren't being used on as high of an adherence level as you would like to see. Right, so how do we transition some of those, so those don't become big problems down the road? The clinic is an avenue to do that, right, because we can provide most of that stuff for free. High blood pressure, high cholesterol, diabetes medication, like all that can, and it, it's really hard to say you're not going to take it if it's free. Like, that's a really hard one for me to stomach in general. Not that I'll know anybody individually, but, like, we're giving you all these avenues to adhere to it, to obviously help you be a better, just a healthier individual, so. But yes, we'll be bringing stuff. Some of it might be significant, some of it might be small tweaks. Musculoskeletal, we've done a lot with that in the last year, right? We brought in ATI, MDI, um, Regenix, MASH. We've actually managed to lower that by like twenty percent. So in, where healthcare is typically going up, we've actually taken costs down. And a lot of that is driving people to those sites where it's cheaper to go, the care is just as good if not better, the imaging is just as good if not better. So how do we continue to find avenues like that? That kind of drive the care to high quality, but lower costs for the district.
I think we have a health update, insurance update in March, so we can bring a lot of that detail forward at that time.
Yes, you bet.
Just to keep us on agenda item a little closer.
If not, you can expect at the end of the year, we have a shiny, pretty dashboard, all the metrics updated. So, um, if you have any questions in the meantime, I hope that answers. I'm just trying to answer questions and be brief. Any other questions? Thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you.
All right, board goal-setting. A couple meetings ago, we talked about board goal-setting. It was at the end of a meeting. That was quite long. I had thought that we sort of had, I won't say consensus, but, um, people were, people were interested in, um, government advocacy as a board and also in, also in, um, uh, talking about self-evaluation of the superintendent. And, um, those being our two goals. There was another, um, another thing mentioned at the end, um, by Debbie, and, and I'm not sure exactly, um, we didn't flush that out much more. So, I think, um, probably two goals is a good, um, a good way, a good place to start, I think. But the board needs to, um, uh, come to consensus on what those two goals should be. So, um, I, I'm interested in advocacy and government advocacy and, um, uh, and evaluation of the superintendent. But I'd like to know how the people feel.
I guess my question would be, what would the goal, I mean, is like for government advocacy, was that just be like, if we all wrote a letter, we met our goal, or like what, what, what is the, how are we measuring that? What is the, what's our desired outcome with that goal? Like, I'm, I'm all for government advocacy, I just want to, like, how are we going to measure if we've done it? And what would be, what would we want to be doing with that?
I think it will be one of the ways to be achieved very simply is that we, if we can have, I know in the past, the state senators was attending here, you know, meetings, but, uh, it's my understanding that state, state has changed, you know? I think we have, so maybe having a state senator come to our meeting, and maybe before the board meeting, if all of us can, can, you know, sit as a board, you know, and, um, lobby. I think, you know, if it's, state senator, same thing with the state representative, and, or, you know, because it's state-level funding, you know? And if you want a congressman, but I think if you meet as a collective, as a group, you know, and, um, that's easily attainable. And hopefully, when everybody speaks up, you know, and they understand that this is a united front. You know, we are just the one school district out of the hundreds of the school district, but we have the right to ask. And, um, unfortunately, public education is not being supported the way it's supposed to be. We have this beautiful presentation from the special ed kids, you know? They need so much, and they need so much. It's not that, you know, they want, it's the need. And unfortunately, the state is only giving us twenty-nine cents, you know, which is unfair, unfair to the public schools. So how, how do we make an effort of, I know it's not going to happen overnight, but we continue, continue the battle of, uh, at least, uh, speaking as a collective voice, if possible, you know? Some, some of the thoughts which I had, maybe, I know that we have this, in Madison, sometimes we have this session where, where people go from the state, you know, school districts and meet, you know? With the representatives and all that stuff, but, you know, sometimes when you have so many school districts, all of, all of, everybody showed up, you know? Yeah, 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 that means they, you're hearing it, but they're hearing, hearing it or just kind of complimentary and for, you know, meet and greet, but requesting them, you want to meet as a district, this is where I ask, what can you do for us and all that stuff, you know? Might, um, at least give us some possible results, not guaranteed, but possible.
Yeah, I think the goal is, I, I think the goal is to, um, if, of government advocacy is, the biennial budget only comes up every two years, right? So, this is, this is when we really need to get the word out on what, on what we think, on what we think the needs are. And to make it a, to make it the work of the board to, to get that word, to, to find out what it is that we want to ask and to ask them for it, um, and to make sure that our voice is heard by them.
And can we, can we work with SWSA? Aren't they kind of coordinating? Could you maybe have something that they're doing or planning that we can hook into?
Yeah, so thus far, so I would say in terms of being able to sort of produce, because it's one thing to say, let's have a meeting, but it's another thing to be adequately prepared before you have such a meeting. So the SWSA is sort of finally settling on sort of, sort of common universal, uh, language that we can all use when sort of lobbying for some of the main, uh, needs of school districts. So I think in terms of being able to speak intelligently and, and sort of concisely on topics, we should be able to use the work of the SWSA to provide that information. I sent out the information about the governor's listening sessions. That's kind of a different ball of wax. Um, I know Mary said she wanted to attend that, but there are specific talking points they produced if you do plan to attend that. So I'll share that with Mary and if anybody else wants to attend that.
It was yesterday.
There's one on Monday. But I, I think if, if we set a goal of having some sort of board-level contact with each of our state-level representatives, um, rep and senator, it might be reasonable because in some ways, saying that our goal is to have a meeting with them, it depends on whether they have that availability and desire as well, right? We can't, I don't know.
I would echo though what Ann said, like, do we call them once? Do we write one letter? Do we meet with them once? And then have we achieved a goal? I just think that something like that could almost be a subcommittee. You know, if Mike, Angie and Ann were like very passionate about meeting with those people, they could be our, our mouthpieces, and they could be the ones from a subcommittee, or they could get together for a special subcommittee meeting and say, okay, we're going to write three letters tonight, or we're going to wordsmith this tonight, or we're going to make this appointment. I don't know if really it's a goal for us to, you know, meet once or meet with someone once, or write one letter, or make that one, to me, that's not really a goal. That's, that's a task that someone as a group has handled, you know?
Would it be, I agree with what you're saying, uh, in order to actually have it be effective. Could it, would it be reasonable to say it's a board goal to form that subcommittee, or is that kind of slacky?
Could it be that we start having like, you know, once, like a, like one meeting per month, we have an actual agenda item that is our, you know, government advocacy and what, and kind of report out like what has happened? Maybe there is also a subcommittee, but like if it becomes like a regular piece of what we're doing, that could be a goal. Like, in order to be more involved in government advocacy, that becomes like a regular point that we report on, whether it's monthly or every other month, that's something that you could kind of track, I feel like, versus just kind of putting out a goal, it's like, yeah, we're going to do this, but without any real way of tracking it.
Just to get a sense, who would be sort of interested in engaging on that work with more frequency? Maxu, to get the sense that that's something you're pretty passionate about.
Definitely, if, anything that can help, you know, because at the end of the day, you know? Definitely, if any, anything that can help to, you know, because at the end of the day, you know. All the districts are dependent on the funds which we receive and budget, you know, is always, you know, tenacious, so. More we can lobby, because I think they owe us this time that we as a district. Demand from them and they listen to us and try to deliver to expectations.
I, I'm certainly interested in, and it's something that, you know, I think I've, I've done in the past. Gone to, um, I guess it started when we, when we uh, talked about the um, uh, the jail. Which isn't the jail anymore, but um. I forget the acronym.
Reintegration.
CRC, thank you.
Reintegration Center.
But um, but, but continues through um, gov, talking with the city, talking with the county, but also now talking with. Um, talking with representatives, um, going to Madison if needed, um, which Linda and I did a couple years ago when they had their advocacy day.
WASB, that, that was, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, they've, comes to capital. It's usually an event that happens.
Yeah, I think it happens every, I think it only happens every two years with the, with the um, by, with the budget. But certainly, I think there, there need, there should be a goal of. Should be a goal, if we set, if we decide that that's one of the things we want. To talk about what it is we want as a board at, at a meeting, or maybe we do have a subcommittee and, and we report out to the. Report out to the board, because it can't be, hey, this is what I want, it's what. It's what our board wants, so we do need, if that's one of the goals we set. Then we need to have, we need to talk around that.
Debbie, do you have a different goal in mind, your?
I, I don't, I just don't see, I just don't see the board advocacy as a goal. I see a subcommittee doing this and, and your idea of um, reporting out at every board meeting, I see that going way by the wayside. Cause what if you don't, I mean, yeah, who's, who's to say we're gonna c- contact these people, I think, I don't know who said it, or Angie said it, I think. They have to have the time for us too, you know, we can, we can call them a hundred times. They don't answer, we don't have anything to say, you know.
Contacting them isn't a goal, building relationship with them is, I think that's the, I think that's.
But I just, I don't see that as a year-long goal, I, I don't, I don't, I see it as a subcommittee. And the subcommittee reports out, just like years ago, maybe, I think Linda was on a subcommittee, we wore the employee. Or the new school board member handbook or something like that, and then we ran a subcommittee for the.
Right, there's a handbook.
Board, uh, board evaluation, you know, was it just a, a group that got together regularly and then we would report out to the board, that's how I see. Advocacy, I don't see it as a goal, I don't see us all getting together on a Wednesday night and all writing letters.
Well, I think you're right.
Making phone calls, you know what I mean, I just don't see that as something happening, happening frequently. I think, when I think of a goal, I think of something that I'm, I'm working towards that I'm gonna achieve.
I think you're right, although I think one of the goals we had several years ago. Was government advocacy as, as related to the city and. We've worked over time and now our relationship with the city is getting better and better. And I see it, I see it similarly.
Maybe the difference, cause I think a lot of that um, government relation stuff, you've taken on uh, the bulk of that work yourself, so. Maybe what we're hearing is there might be some other people who might be interested in um, working with you on that outside of board meetings.
Yeah.
Whether we call it a subcommittee or not.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
I wanted to say that in our. In our board library, we do have our past goals, there's a form already made, it gives a structure. I mean, I'm looking at the one for twenty-two, twenty-three, we had an act, action sets, action statement number one. And that's where we created the key communicated group, that was our goal, but we haven't done these since. But we have an action statement, we tie it to the key work of school boards, we tie it to the coherence plan and how we measure, so we've written these out. We had three of them the last twenty-two, twenty-three. And that might, if you read those and reviewed those, we'd have some idea what we're trying to come up with. I don't know if you want to take a look at a couple of them there.
Well, I think it's one thing to have a correct way to write them, right, I agree with you Linda, they should need to be actionable and measurable, but it'd be nice to just have a sense of. What people, like.
Like direction we're going?
Correct, the camp, the, the ballpark, what ballpark are we? What area of our work do we want to? Like, we've, I think.
Advocacy.
Developing a appropriate, effective superintendent evaluation tool is something actionable and. That we could hopefully work towards and accomplish by the end of the year. Right, or am I crazy in that one?
No, that's.
So, is there, it's one thing to say it needs to be written this way, but we need to know what we're writing about, so. Do you have another area of improvement or goal setting for the board?
I think we got advocacy, we just have to figure out what it looks like.
What it looks like.
And what the goal is, the goal is to. At least have an awareness, everybody can, like you said, we have common language and how we talk about our issues with the state. I mean, I would follow the lead of SWSA, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, they already are trying to.
Read what our SWSA thought.
And maybe um. We could have a session and at least review those, that work, if you could.
Sure, and maybe even if there's interest, we could invite the one that, um, see if anybody from SWSA wanted to come and actually just do a workshop for, for us. Or I could present it as best I can.
Right, cause they have new leadership now, I don't know if they're doing things differently, if they, I mean, they have to find a better way to work at, work at boards too, right?
Yeah, could, that could be a, an interesting opportunity for, um, why am I blanking on her name, what's new?
Kathy.
Kathy's, I don't know if she'd be interested in that, but. What do you think, Emily?
I think we could, if we can find a focus of what we want her to do, we can ask. I don't know too, know her too well yet, but I would imagine she'd be open to it.
If it's within her scope of work.
She seems to want, yep, she seems to want to engage more and understand, she's probably gonna wanna learn about our story too then.
Yeah, Mary, please.
Kind of shifting, dovetailing, would there be any role for us to do more education and outreach to the community? I mean, we can go sit with a, a congressperson or something like that, but I think educating the, the public as far as. This is, you know, what, public schools are, how they're funded, or how we're being short, given short shrift, or special ed. You know, I mean, I understand more than I did before when I sat out there, but nothing compared to what probably just. Somebody, my neighbor down the block, so how do we inform? The public so that they know the implications of.
We inform the public here.
As I'm listening to this, it sounds like a lot of, we have, there's a lot of this sort of nebulous desire to do the right thing when it comes to advocacy, without a lot of. Any of us being, none of us being professional lobbyists, having a clear idea of what that would look like, to do that most effectively, so maybe the goal for this year is honestly just to. Figure out the most effective ways that we as board members ca- can.
Like, to create a plan to become effective, like?
Like, both personally and as a board and how to help our community, I, I don't know, I'm just thinking out loud as I, as per usual, but. What I'm hearing is a lot of like, I think Maksu just really wants to meet with people individually and, you, you know, and. Mary wants to write eighty letters a day and, and of all of these different ways of engaging with our um, elected representatives. What is perhaps the most effective use of our time, both as individuals and as a board?
Well, how many que, how many times have you gotten a phone call about school funding from a community member?
Settle.
Well, no, I'm talking to Andy. I mean, cause if somebody called the, called Darlene and said, I need to talk about school funding, they're gonna connect you, how many calls have you answered?
In two and a half years.
Maybe in your whole career, and I'd be willing to go with that number.
Ten?
Okay.
It's like in eleven years, maybe, ten total?
I, I love your idea of connecting with the community, but you have to have people that are interested in school funding. Or who really care, like, you, we're gonna have people all over Facebook, right, when the tax bills come out, I think on the sixteenth or whatever I read. And they're all gonna be mad at the public schools, but nobody's gonna call you up and say, well, how are public schools funded? You know what I mean, like, I think about, I think about that night we went to the Andy Daniels thing at the Saber Center, right? That was really important, it was for kids, it was protecting our own kids, I don't even have little kids anymore, I'm thinking about protecting my grandchildren who are, you know, two and three years old. And there were, what, five of us in the audience, and most of us were school board members. Yeah. So, I mean, I, I would love to do that, but you have to have people that have an interest in that and. School funding probably is just not of great interest to the general public, you know.
Just have to market it differently. They should have a class.
Like Vegas, Vegas school funding.
A Vegas night, maybe, yeah.
If we could only come up with the exact. But yes, that, the.
You know, that's unfortunately, that's, that's it. You know, tax bill one-on-one, see if anybody would come, come.
Well, that's beyond the scope of our board.
I think one thing. It does seem like this board generally has a desire to try and make things better for our, our schools, both. In what we can control and sort of like in what influence we have, which is minimal, but we have as much influence, perhaps slightly more than the average. Average citizen, because we sit as a collective body, so may, I, I don't know, I, I'm, I would like to form a goal around the idea of. At least figure, as, by the end of the year, establishing a subcommittee with some clear direction of what to do, I.
Well, or, like, something more actionable, could it be, like, I mean, I know we're limited by if anybody like actually responds to our invitation, but could it be, could our goal be that? You know, this year, we're going to, uh, you know, establish a relationship with our elected officials. You know, and by, either by inviting them or going, you know, taking a little board road trip to Madison and meeting with them, you know what I mean, like, that seems a little bit more concrete than like. We want to do more, we all are, we all want to do all these wonderful, good things, but we don't really have a specific plan of how to. And I know that we're limited by, you know, they have schedules and they don't, you know, but I have to imagine that over the next even six months, we could find some time for even an hour.
You met with both of them before, Mike, so maybe if the goal is just have a, have a meeting at which as many board members who are interested in able attend. I, I think it's unrealistic to invite them to a board meeting, I. Don't think that's particularly palatable.
And I think, I also think, I also will say that, I, I think we need to write this, cause we talked about it enough, but I think that. Thirty-three percent of what is spent of, by the state is, um, budget is spent on education.
Yeah.
So. They need to know how we feel that money should, how we could best use that money.
Yeah, so that's why I feel like it might be our best.
How we could best use our money, right, I mean, that's the.
So, rather than like kind of this, how can we do all this, like, if we wanna make a difference, speaking directly to elected officials is gonna be the best way to do it, so.
Absolutely.
Well, and at the, two meetings ago with SWSA, their main re- recommendation wasn't go to them with asks, it's build a relationship, so. There you go, we need to.
And we need to hold them accountable, we, they, we are their boss.
Of course, but that's, yes, right, but that, that.
But I've.
So, so what goal could we, what goal should we write?
In the next year, some portion of the school board will have a face-to-face meeting with both of our state-level elected representatives, period. You gotta reach out to their, you have, you have to reach out to their scheduling secretary, find a time, pick a coffee shop, and then we'll send out the invitation. We'll see how it goes.
That, I mean, that is in terms of like building the relationship, we'll, we'll try for, you know, our goal is to do it once, but if, if we meet with them and they're like, hey, this is good stuff. Maybe it becomes.
Every other month.
That could be every other.
Every three days. I'm setting a, a standing weekly meeting.
Okay, Angie.
No, but you know, I mean, you start small, right, you make one connection, and I mean, everything's about relationships, right, so you start, you make a connection and.
Good, I'm glad we've boiled this down a bit, so, I don't know, maybe it's too small, but.
All right, are we happy with that, are we happy with that, one, and can we make, can we um. Is the other thing, is the other thing we wanna do, uh, talk about, um, or move forward with?
The superintendent.
The superintendent evaluation.
All right, how about we work together offline to craft these into palatable, I used the word palatable twice, nicely phrased. Goals, ala the format that Linda identified for us in the board docs library, and share it out with the board, sound good?
That sounds great.
Sounds good, okay.
All right, anybody else? Board liaison reports. Please, Mary.
Um, I met um. With, I'm, I'm with Student Services Leo, and we had a community listening session with actually Colin and his mom and, and was it, um, Peter? No, James, James, James's mom, um, and it was so complimentary of their educators and the EAs and the bus drivers and specific teachers. Um, but they, they said they, as I think you kind of said, we need more connection, we need more communication, but how do you get people to show up at a meeting? You know, um, but uh, they talked about especially the transitions. From fifth to sixth grade and from eighth to ninth grade, they need smoother transitions, better communication, things like that. Um, and uh, more intentional meetings, uh, meet and greet opportunities for families who have kids with IEPs. And um, five oh fours and just looking to build that, that relationship with people to get, you know. Um, collaboration, communication, commiseration, that sort of thing, so um, yeah, it was very, very enjoyable.
Was it those two because there was only ones that showed up, or were they the invitees?
Yeah, no, it goes out, I think, to.
They were the only two that showed up.
Everybody, and there were three, I think there were, there were four parents.
Oh, there were four parents.
And Colin.
And Colin. Every time he presents to us, he does a little bit better, he's, he's making great progress, I feel like we've gotten to know him over the years.
All right.
I did meet with Dr. Mo over the uh, coherence plan, so it was a, a good meeting. Got there a little early, but I think the report turned out well.
And I met with Andy Daniels, and I have to say, um, that was the best meeting I've ever had in all my years. He really, seriously.
Was it the coffee or?
I, I was not offered the coffee, however, and I was here on Tuesday morning, I know, I'm really angry about that, but. Um, he had an agenda and we talked about safety, um, he wants to move beyond active threat responses, although that's still important, but he's talking about. Employee safety and he's talking about weather preparedness, and he brought up some really interesting things that people think that like the Saber Center was. Built and reinforced to be the be-all and-all place to be in severe, severe weather when in fact it is not, and so he's working with. Um, a former weatherman, meteorologist, I can't remember his name, but they're coming up with a plan. Uh, for us here in Franklin, we talked about energy and he showed me on his computer this graph he's got, and he was showing me where the spike was at Southwood Glen at like eleven o'clock at night. And, you know, then he researched, like, why is there electricity spiking at eleven o'clock at night in Southwood Glen when no one's there, and so he's investigating that. Um, it was, okay, so I'm probably not gonna explain it correctly, but somehow, something was programmed incorrectly by another workman from a Illingsworth.
It's an HVAC unit that.
Yes, oh, yes, okay, so.
Did you say an H-track?
HVAC, it's an H-track unit, those, those, a lot of energy out of H-track.
They do use a lot of energy, for sure, um, so I saw those graphs and how Ben Franklin's u- energy use has gone down, and that was really, um. Was very interesting, really, I, I never thought that would be interesting, but it really was, the way he explained it, and I kept thinking, I wish my husband were here, he would just enjoy this so much. Um, he talked about the referendum and he showed me his plan and he's planning out a five-year plan instead of, you know, a four-year plan, cause that's how long it'll take to build it. But we know that in year five, we're gonna find all the things that maybe went wrong, that wasn't done correctly, and that's all gonna be fixed up, so he worked on, told me all about that. Um, we, he talked about his buildings and grounds team successes and his, you know, the great staff that he has and. Honestly, I don't know if I've ever met anyone more passionate about their job and about the people that works for him, I mean, it made me wanna go into buildings and grounds that, you know, I wanted to say, did you go to college for this? How do you get into this field, but he just, he just loves his job and he was very enthusiastic and I was. And I was there, I was there for two hours and that time flew. It really did. Like when I walked outside, I was like, oh, my gosh, I left my husband with the grandchildren. I'm thinking, wow, did they have them tied up now or something? But, um, yeah, it was fantastic. Just the best meeting I've ever had, ever, since we've done liaisons.
Oh, no, everybody's gonna be fighting to have buildings and.
Really, I mean, seriously, you wanna be Andy's liaison.
Can you mark the video for him so he can make sure and go back and see this?
I will.
It was fantastic. I'm not kidding you.
Uh, I I went to, um, I was at Countrydale, um, driving a bus there, but, um, uh, Ms. Nickel, uh, came on the bus and, um, they had been having some issues with, um, they had been at, with student behavior on buses. So she asked the police officer that is coming to Countrydale to go on two buses a day to to tell the kids in five minutes, um, what their, what their expected behavior was on the bus. Um, and I I think it's, I wouldn't really mention it, except I think it's, it's something that's exemplary of what's being done at this district. There was, um, a letter that we received. And, uh, Mr. Volo received as well about, um, about the bells. Why are the bells ringing? Why is it so loud outside in the neighborhood from high school? And, um, it was, it was kind of an interesting letter, but.
Very well written.
But, um, handwritten letter, why, and and they didn't realize that when they redid the bells last year that they're ringing outside as well as inside during all the times. So they're really loud. So they've changed that now and it got changed quickly. When things come up in this district, they're being, they're being taken care of quickly and that's appreciated.
I wondered where you were going with that story.
So, sorry, I tried to make it shorter rather than longer, but. So at any rate, thank you for doing that. Um, anybody else have, um, board liaison report, reports or school and community engagement reports?
I just, as a treasurer, I want to acknowledge Andy's hard work, especially taking into consideration some of the districts which have been really had a red flag, you know, and I give kudos to Andy for doing an amazing job and keeping our district afloat and thank you for all the hard work. I know you do a lot of hard work behind the scenes which we don't see day to day, but thank you.
Linda, please.
I did get a chance to visit with Pleasant View when I got to see the reading program in the classroom. It was, uh, it was pretty amazing. Um, it was second, second graders? Yeah, second graders. Very big words that they use, that they, uh, learn. And I was surprised at the, it was a workbook, very fat workbook. They were making their way through. They're just about done. But the kids were engaged and the, um, stories were interesting. It was about migration we read about. And kids seemed to be interested in animals. One little boy asked me, well, what's my favorite animal after I was reading?
What'd you say?
I said the butterfly because that was part of the story. But, um, and it, teachers seemed to be, you know, some are learning it because it's for the first time. I guess, um, Ashley mentioned that third grade had piloted last year, so they were a little bit more comfortable with the, uh, information, but they have the, how it's formatted and how it's structured and it's very, um, integrated and I wouldn't say reading's complicated, but it is, uh, was fascinating to see. I kept thinking about finding one of those books that I learned to read in. You've all, you've already know what those look like. Rhyming words and short words. Have to find it. If I find it, I'll bring it. And just comparing what they do now is amazing. So it was good to see that in the classroom.
I have gone to diverse grounds the last couple of weeks.
Oh, good. I always forget to put a calendar reminder.
A weekly standing one more time before Christmas. One of the, one of the, um, one of the, uh, staff said this is her favorite day of the week. She gets to see those kids in there.
Awesome.
It really is fun to see those kids interact with everybody. Anyway.
I saw Who Killed Elvis?
Oh, you did?
Oh, yes, I did too. That was fun.
How those kids memorize, like, line and page. I mean, it's just all talking. It's not a song that you might, you know, like internalize easier. It's just all pure dialogue. It was like, oh, my gosh.
Well, except for the Elvis dance break, which was pretty impressive.
That's true.
The middle school drama. They did a really good job. And they had so many kids involved. I forget the total number, but it was.
Forty-five.
Yeah, very large.
Shout out to Erica Naven for doing yeoman's work on that.
And then I go to Tony Evers' thing yesterday and it, it was just listening. It was, you know, people talking. I said my piece and. Well, it wasn't about, it was my little mini crusade about feminine hygiene products. But at least they took it down.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Future agenda items, Ben Franklin's school presentation, Friends of Franklin, review and discussion of WASB proposed resolutions, open enrollment seats, preliminary budget at a glance, potential report on additional SRO position, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four financial audit report, Franklin Forward update, district administrator self-evaluation of goals, um, Southwood Glen School presentation, athletics and activities and policies fifty-three, fourteen, medication policy fifty-three, fifty, alcohol, tobacco and drug use, abuse prevention, intervention and treatment. Looking for a motion to adjourn the meeting. Debbie, I think, or Mary, I don't know. All in favor? Aye, opposed. Motion carries. We are adjourned at eight thirty-six. Thank you.
Thank you.